Well, good morning, everyone. It is now nine o'clock. And at this time, we're going to ask that you please join me and rise and join in the invocation given by Pastor Dave Riley with Cornerstone Bible Church, and then please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you, Mr. Riley.
Shall we pray together? Lord, we thank you for this day. This truly is a day that you have made, and we will rejoice and be glad in it. We ask that you would bless this meeting today, Lord. And as we think about it, Lord, whatever is on this agenda, God, we just give it to you. We ask that you would bless the commissioners, our leaders, the chairperson. We thank you for their service. We ask that you bless those in service of our county and our community today. We think about each person, Lord, that is there today, serving and doing what they're supposed to be doing. Bless each and every one in this room as well, God. And we thank you, Lord, that you love us, that you're always with us, that you'll never leave us. Bless this meeting now, we pray, in your name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you, Pastor Riley. This meeting of the Board of Commissioners is now hereby called to order. We do have an announcement to make, is that the following, the planning and zoning item that was advertised for this meeting and has been postponed by the staff into further notice, and that is the planning and zoning of Smith Douglas Home of Woodstock, Georgia, requesting existing zoning conditions for the property located on the north side of Jonesboro Road, west of Chambers Road. Again, this planning and zoning item has been postponed by staff. And regarding the agenda today, please do note that there is item 18 that has been changed, the resolution authorizing budget amendments from SPOS 4, East Atlanta Thurman Flat Rock Project to District 5 Park, and it is now changed to the budget amendment from SPOS 5, Countywide Police Station to District 5 Park. The other note to make regarding the agenda, Mr. Charlie Mosley is stuck in traffic, and we will modify the agenda to allow him to speak once he does arrive. Are there any other changes to the agenda? I now call for a motion to accept the agenda and the changes noted.
Move to approve.
We got a motion?
Second.
We got a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. We'll now move to the next appointments that we have, because we will come back to the Development Authority's update by Charlie Mosley once he arrives. And so we'll move on to items seven, and eight, and nine, and 10, and 11 regarding reappointments and appointments. We have a reappointment to the Board of Tax Collectors for Mr. Lawrence Michael Senior and Mr. William Thompson Junior. For appointments to the Connecting Henry Board for District 2, we have Mr. Michael And then on the appointment to Council on Aging, we have Mr. Tina Jones from District 2. And reappointments to the Recreation Board, we have a reappointment, Mr. Terry Sanders. And then to the Library Board, we have reappointment to District 2 of Ms. Mary Scruggs. These are the appointments and reappointments. I have, the floor is now open for a motion for approval.
Move to approve.
We got a motion?
Second.
We have a second. Any discussions? All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, we will now move on to item 12 regarding the recognition of Turning Point Church for donations to the Henry County Fire Department and also the Henry County Police Department. And we're asking Ms. Melissa Reagan to come forth to introduce Turning Point Church.
Good morning, Chair. Good morning, Commissioners. This morning, we have a recognition to Turning Point Church. The Henry County Board of Commissioners would like to express its sincerest appreciation to officials and members of Turning Point Church in McDonough for their generosity with two recent donations. This morning, we are recognizing Pastor Michael Turner and members of Turning Point Church who generously made these donations to Henry County Public Safety Agencies. On January 4th, 2017, Turning Point Church's lead pastor, Michael Turner, presented a $20,000 donation to the Henry County Police Department. And again, on January 5th, church officials presented a check in the amount of $20,000 to the Henry County Fire Department.
Any comments from any of the Commissioners? Yes. Commissioner Prince?
I just want to thank Turning Point Church for the donation. Thank you.
Okay. Any other?
Also, I'd like to thank churches. Great for them to do this.
And of course, I'd like to add that this is definitely a generous donation to both our police and fire departments. We definitely are continuing to focus on public safety, and this definitely helps us to meet some of the needs of our public safety departments. And again, Turning Point Church, we appreciate you, and if they're here to, if they're interested in taking a picture. Okay? Well, thank you, Ms. Reagan. Ms. Robinson, I'm sorry. All right, we'll now move into our consent agenda items. We have seven consent agenda items. One regarding the acceptance of the $20,000 to the Henry County Fire Department, $20,000 that was also being accepted to the Police Department, $1,500 to the Police Department as part of the Henry County Police Department's participation in the Electronic Crimes Task Force. And then, of course, the fourth one is a budget amendment for the Police Department to transfer funds into departmentally in order to clear up any variances. For our EMA, Emergency Management Agency, there is a resolution also accepting, authorizing and accepting the Annual Emergency Management Performance Grant from the Georgia Emergency Management Agency. And then the DOT is authorizing a budget amendment of FY 2016 L-MIG funds from restricted fund balance to the Henry County Department of Transportation, general supplies and asphalt in the amount of $593,000. And then our final consent agenda item is related to senior services regarding the approval of Amendment 1 of the Atlanta Regional Commission's sub-grant agreement. Are there any items from the consent agenda that needs to be moved to the agenda? If not, the floor is now open for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Move to approve.
We got a motion?
Second.
We got a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? This ends our consent agenda. We'll now move into item 14 on public safety, and we're asking Major Keith Golein to come to present us the resolution requesting authorization to use federal asset forfeiture and seized funds.
Good morning, ma'am. Chair and Board of Commissioners. The request for authorization to use federal asset forfeiture and seized funds in the amount of $98,433 to purchase tactical rifles and related equipment for the uniformed patrolled officers. Henry County Police Department is requesting this purchase and to actually purchase 100 tactical rifles and related equipment for the Police Department to be issued to the units out into the field. The tactical rifle that we've selected is the SIG M400, and related equipment are slings, magazines, lights, as well as a rifle bag. These will be issued out to the units that are out into the field, and each individual officer will receive a package that totals all of these rifles. The purchasing department sent out invitations to bid through the county website and listed ACCG GLGA. Two vendors submitted a proposal for the tactical rifles and related equipment. Dana Safety Supply of Sugar Hill, Georgia, was the lowest and most responsive bidder in the amount of $98,433. Henry County Police Department requests to transfer these funds from the asset forfeiture account for the purchase of these rifles from Dana Safety Supply.
All right, thank you, Major Golein. Any questions? The floor is now open for a motion to approval.
Move to approve.
Got a motion?
Second.
We got a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you, Major Golein.
Thank you all.
We're now moving to the resolution regarding a bid for the purchase of the annual physical exam for firefighters, and we invite Deputy Chief Brad Johnson to make the presentation.
Lady Mayor, Chair, good morning. Good morning, Commissioners. This morning, we're here to present our annual physical contract. It was let out through sealed bid number 17-33, and we had three responsible vendors reply to it. It is our recommendation, after reviewing the bid package, that we award contract excitement of Marietta, Georgia, for the price of $93,000 to complete this function and to complete our annual physicals for all certified firefighters.
All right, are there any questions? The floor is now open for a motion for approval. So we, got a motion?
Second.
We got a second. Any discussions? All in favor? Any opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Chief. We're now moving to item 15 regarding the resolution approving purchase of natural gas using statewide contract, and we thank you, Mr. Rock Gray, for your presentation.
Good morning. The item I have for you this morning is request to participate in an annual agreement through the state contract for the procurement of natural gas services. This allows us to procure these services at the best available rate at the time we renew each year. The vendor could change through the program, but our request is to participate in the statewide contract for a period of one year with two mutually agreed upon annual renewals.
Any other questions from the board? All right, the floor is now open for a motion for approval.
Move to approve.
We have a motion?
Second.
We have a second. Any further discussions? All in favor?
Thank you.
Any opposed? Thank you, Mr. Gray. We'll now move into our Emergency Management Association Resolution authorizing restoration of the metal roof for the Henry County Emergency Operations Center with Mr. Don Ash. And of course, you give us a brief update on some other Emergency Management Agency updates.
Good morning, Madam Chair and Commissioners.
Good morning.
We're here today requesting a resolution and authorization to repair the roof at the E911 Center. We've been in the building now roughly four years. In the past 14 months, we've had over 30 service orders put into our building maintenance and over $5,000 in contract work. Our roof is in bad shape right now. We're actually having to put tarp over critical communication equipment when we're having heavy rains in the system. We are, have worked with building maintenance and we're requesting to have this work done under the U.S. Communities Contract. The total cost of that would be $174,367. Those funds are available in our E911 Fund Balance Accounts.
Are there any questions? Yes. Commissioner Prince?
This one's coming out of not the general fund.
It'll be coming out of E911 Funds, that's correct.
Commissioner.
Don, how old is this building?
The building is four years old. We've been experiencing major roof problems for probably about the last 12 months. I think we were on the agenda in January of last year to get the roof repaired.
So just four years old, we can guarantee you anything on the building?
This was a part of our SPOS project, I believe, run. We had some roof done on the onset of the project. When the building was purchased from, the source it was purchased from, we had some roof work done. We never repaired the entire roof.
Okay. I saw.
Yes, Commissioner Prince.
So are you saying this was an existing building that we're, that we moved into?
That's correct. This was, the previous history on this building, it was a recycling center, and then it was a camping build, a camping camper business that sold RVs and recreational vehicles. And the county purchased that property and converted it over to the E911 Center. It was not a new construction.
Okay, all right. That makes a little more sense.
Okay. Any other questions? All right, we're now open the floor for a motion for approval.
Move to approve.
We got a motion?
Second.
We have a second. Any further discussions? All in favor? Any opposed? All right, Mr. Ash, you want to give another?
Thank you, thank you for the opportunity. Just my brief update, I wanted to update our community, our board, and our county that the E911 and Emergency Communications, Emergency Management operates an emergency notification program. We recently updated that program, and we're moving to a new vendor called Code Red. I wanted to inform our citizens that have registered on the existing system, there will be no need to transfer the information. But later today, you'll see a new link, and we encourage our citizens to register for emergency information through that system. It's called Code Red.
Okay. And how will they best register again?
They should be able to go to the county site and click on the hyperlink that goes directly to it, and you're able to register your home phone, your email, and your cellphone to get emergency warning information for severe weather.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Appreciate you both, gentlemen. All right, we'll now move into item 17 from our Henry County Department of Transportation, and we'll invite up Mr. Wade Stroud.
Good morning, Chair Wood and fellow Commissioners. The first agenda item you have before you today is an annual contract for quarry aggregate. The Department of Transportation requires quarry aggregate for various county projects. Having a contract for this material allows quick access to the product without the necessity of bidding each time the product is required, and also guarantees the prices will remain firm for the contract period. Sealed bids were requested for various quarry stone items. Bid documents were sent via Team Georgia Marketplace, and we had one vendor respond to the invitation to bid. That item sheet is attached. DOT will be the primary user, however, the contract will be available to all county departments that require this commodity. Funding for this product is allocated within the requesting department's budget, and materials will be ordered as required for approval. Department recommends award of bulky materials as the overall low bidder, recommend award as a unit contract price with no fixed quantities, and the prices will remain firm for the contract period. Be happy to answer any questions any of you may have.
All right. All right, the floor is now open for a motion for approval.
Move to approve.
We got a motion?
Second.
We have a second. Any further discussions? All in favor? Any opposed? All right, thank you. We'll now move into the next item for the approval of a license agreement between Henry County, Georgia, and the Eagles Landing Community Association.
Okay. Thank you again, Chair Wood. The agenda item you have before you is a proposed license agreement for landscaping improvements within Eagles Landing right-of-way. The Board of Commissioners previously awarded a license agreement with the Eagles Landing Community Association on March 4th of 2014 for landscape improvements within the Eagles Landing Parkway right-of-way near Country Club Drive and Country Club Drive right-of-way north of Eagles Landing Parkway. Prior to that, on August 6th of 2013, the Board of Commissioners approved an agreement with the Villages of Eagles Landing for landscape and hardscape improvements along the frontage of the Villages on the south side of Eagles Landing Parkway. Subsequently, the Eagles Landing Community Association desires to make certain landscape improvements along Eagles Landing Parkway on portions of the median and shoulder outside of the areas previously landscaped in order to beautify and enhance the aesthetic appearance of Eagles Landing Parkway. As part of this request, an agreement between the Eagles Landing Community Association and Henry County is needed concerning placement, maintenance, and irrigation of the proposed improvements. Plans for the proposed placement of landscaping have been submitted and are going through the county review process. And again, department personnel recommend the approval of this agreement to allow this community to come in our right-of-way and do the maintenance and beautifications they desire along Eagles Landing Parkway.
All right. Are there any questions for Mr. Stroud?
I have some statements, actually. I appreciate the group in Eagles Landing doing this. We've had a major issue with landscaping, and I did want to tell the public, I was planning on landscaping down the East Lake Extension, which would be an extension of this, but it turns out that the speed limit is 55 miles an hour, and we can't do any landscaping on a road that has 55 mile an hour speed. So we tried to landscape, continue this whole look going down through the East Lake Extension, but we were not able to. So I just want to let the public, because I had spoken before about that. But again, I do appreciate the group in Eagles Landing taking this on.
And I just want to make a commission of efforts on this effort to bring beautification to, I will say, to north end of Henry County. As you guys know, we've been doing that along Fairview Road, and I know Stop Bridges making efforts and try to beautify 138 as well as North Henry Boulevard, and I think that should be a common practice amongst all the Commissioners sitting up here at the dais.
Very good. And also, this is another way to save taxpayers' dollars, because this community is investing their own money into their community, and that really helps us out as a board and from a taxpaying standpoint as well.
Yes, ma'am.
Any other comments or questions? All right, the floor is now open for a motion for approval.
Move to approve.
A motion and a second. Any further discussions? All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. All right, Mr. Stroud, you may continue on to item C.
Thank you, ma'am. Before you, there's a resolution authorizing the execution and delivery of sewer line easement and right-of-entry for sewer line improvements on Fairview Road. There's one, there are actually two parcels along this Fairview corridor that are owned by Henry County. As many of you know, at the request of Henry County in our SPOS program for the expansion of our park on Fairview Road, we've asked the Henry County Water and Sewer Authority to expand sewer service to accommodate the park. This is what that project is for, and this is allowing Henry County Water and Sewer, or Water Authority, to be able to have that permanent sanitary sewer easement on a piece of property that's owned by Henry County.
Thanks, Wade. I just want to say, everything we're doing on Fairview right now is to bring quality and positive economic development. If you look in the Fairview community, see a new medical urgent care slash primary care facility coming up. Soon, you will see two 30,000 square foot medical office buildings coming up in the community. We made the community a walkable community, where you see people walking outside every single day. It's a beautiful sight, and we want to continue this effort as we move forward. The sewer, along with the beautification, is going to help us attract more businesses to the Fairview community. We're working together with our neighboring counties to invest, combine our resources to make that whole corridor one that's attractive and one that competes, that can compete with the entire region. So I want to thank you for your efforts on this.
You're welcome. Very good. Any other comments? All right, the floor is now open for a motion for approval.
I still move.
Got a motion?
Second.
Got a second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? All right, thank you, Mrs. Stroud. Okay. I have noted that Mr. Mosley has entered into the building, and we did want to modify the agenda, so are you have any other items, Mr. Stroud?
I have one more.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I'm sorry. Oh, yes, so item D, so thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you again, Boar. Before you, we have an ordinance, we're proposing an amendment to the ULDC. It's an ordinance by Henry County to amend Chapter 8, Infrastructure Improvements, specifically Section 8.01.07, improvements to existing streets and rights of way for residential, commercial, and/or industrial developments in accordance with Section 12.02.11, and Section 12.03.00 of the Henry County Unified Land Development Code. A brief history of what this really is about. One of the challenges that we have in Henry County when we talk about any type of development is any development that comes in on what we call an unimproved roadway has to go forth and do certain upgrades to that roadway. Part of the challenge we have with our code is, is it doesn't really do a very good job of defining what an unimproved roadway is. So when a developer comes in for a residential development and say the roadway is 19 or 20 feet wide under our current code, we're supposed to require them to improve that section to the new typical section by Henry County from that development all the way back to the closest improved roadway. Obviously, what we want to do is, we want to come up with a fair and equitable agreement that allows for proper development where it belongs, but also doesn't put an undue burden on the developer, but on the same side protects Henry County's interests with our roadways. So I want to read for you this morning basically the amendment that we're proposing and kind of talk you through each section of it. And again, this can be found in staff report. It's Section 8.01.07.B, Existing Paved Road, and this is the proposed amendment. For any existing paved two-lane county road upon which a development has frontage and access that is less than 20 feet in width and classified as a local road, or less than 22 feet in width and classified as a collector roadway or greater, the roadway shall be widened relative to county specifications, see subsection 8.01.05.I, and table 8.01.06.I and K, along the limits of the site's frontage. Widening of the roadway shall include improvements to the shoulder, the ditch, and back slope to meet county DOT standards. Depending on the condition of the existing roadway, paces score less than 70, there may be requirements for additional improvements to the overall roadway width along the site's frontage, such as improvements to the typical pavement section and resurfacing. For any roadway less than 19 feet in width, the roadway shall be required to be widened, possible typical pavement section improvement, placement of shoulder, ditch, and slopes to meet county DOT standards, and resurfacing along the site's frontage, as well as outside the site's frontage limits up to the nearest roadway meeting Henry County standards as determined by county DOT. The minimum right-of-way required along to subsection 8.01.05.I shall be dedicated along the entire frontage of the development. One of the challenges that we ran into when we would require a developer to improve a roadway if it did not meet what our definition of a standard road relative to substandard was forcing that individual to go out and purchase right-of-way. Obviously, that's very difficult when you consider being able to make a private entity go and attempt to purchase right-of-way from private landowners. Obviously, the county's not interested in going through any sort of condemnation process to aid in that development. So we feel like, based off our analysis, and we reached out to several local communities to find out what they were doing. We wanted to come up with something that not only fit a county that was our size, but again, also provided a fair and equitable treatment not only of our interest, but that of these individuals that have property that as long as it is conducive with the ULDC and the future land use map, we wanted them to have that opportunity to know on the front end what they were going to have to do in order to develop that property. So I apologize for the long and winding explanation. It's a little bit confusing, but we, as a staff, feel like we've come up with a good common ground on this that not only protects our interests, but also allows developers to know on the front end what their requirements are going to be.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Wade. Stroud. This is a public hearing on this ULDC AM 1701, and persons wishing to be heard in opposition to this request will have a total of 10 minutes to present their opposition, and then those in favor will likewise have 10 minutes. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition, please do come forward now. Anyone in opposition, please come forward now. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of this request, please come now. The public hearing is now concluded. We're now open the floor for a motion for approval.
Actually, a comment.
Yes.
Thank you, Chairman.
I'm sorry, you have questions?
Yes.
Okay, sir, I'm sorry.
Wade, I appreciate you bringing this. I'm guessing probably the general public doesn't understand the importance of this, but we've had so many complaints in the past, and the language just was unclear, and this should straighten some things out and get everybody on the same page, and this should have been done a long time ago. But I appreciate you guys taking the initiative, and I appreciate Mr. Simmons also jumping on this, because we've recognized in many areas where Henry County has come through and improved roads, but not made them, the pass was what, 24 feet wide or something like that? And it's put an undue burden on the developer. And so we've gone back and forth with this, but I really appreciate you taking the initiative on this and getting this straightened out so everybody's on the same page, so the developers do know what their responsibility is when they come to Henry County.
You're welcome.
So, thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Okay, any other questions? Yes, and comments?
Thank you for bringing this. Boy, we've had a lot of discussions in the last two years about this, and... Boy, we've had a lot of discussions in the last two years about this and it's a problem and it's a good fix and thank you so much.
You're welcome, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? The floor is now open for a motion to approve this request.
Move to approve.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussions? All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, thank you, Mr. Stroud.
Thank you, Chair, wooden board.
Well, I saw Mr. Charlie Mosley come in, but we're going to move on into our next SPOS item and then come back to you, Mr. Mosley, if that's okay. Item eighteen is our SPOS Resolution Authorizing a Budget Amendment from SPOS Four, the countywide police station to District Five New Park in Fairview. And we're going to invite Mr. Burke Halter to come up and make the presentation.
Chair, Commissioners, good morning.
Um, Chair, there are people in here that want to speak on this particular project and I was hoping that the board would approve the ability for them to, um, to express their concern.
Thank you, Commissioner. I definitely agree that we need to hear and have made enough that we will open it up for those that are here, because I do recognize we've got a great crowd here and we've also received emails and other comments as well, so. So, I will acknowledge, um, ask the board if you will approve to allow the public to come now, and then of course, Mr. Burke Halter, we ask that you make your presentation. And we do ask that those that are here to make their comments to please hear us through this as well, okay? All right, so the board need a motion to open for public comment?
No, second.
Okay. Um, so those, I do have two public comments already that were signed in prior to the board meeting and we'll allow them to come forth and the first one was Mr. John Bailey. Mr. Bailey? And we will allow you five minutes.
Before Mr. Bailey speaks, I just want to make a couple of comments. The first comment is that these monies, although they're in the countywide budget, they were voted specifically into District Five for a police station. The reason why I added this project to the, you know, at the police station to SPOS years ago is because at that particular time, there was a lot of discussion about Stop restarting their own police station. Since that time, circumstances has have changed. We have already moved two million dollars out of that particular budget specifically for economic development and safety issues in the Fairview area, and I'm asking that we can use the other two million dollars that specifically is in the budget for District Five, voted in by the voters of Henry County, to provide safety for the children and the adults, to protect the people in my district from being hit by cars and other things as such. So, I'm asking the board for their support. We have a number of people here that live in that particular area, where you have cars driving in a sex of sixty, seventy, eighty miles an hour, and when that park opens up, it's going to be a major attraction, not just for the people in Henry County, but it's going to be a major attraction across the Atlanta region. It's a mix between Piedmont Park and Centennial Olympic Park, there's walking trails, there's soccer, lacrosse, and football fields. So, you're going to have thousands and thousands of people in that particular area on a daily basis. That park is a destination park. That park was built to help spur even more economic development for the businesses in that area and it helped attract new businesses to the area. So, for a county that's approaching three hundred thousand, we should be thinking big. We shouldn't be thinking small. We've thought small for years and that's why we're in the situation we're in today. Let's think big, let's try, let's try to make the investments that are going to bring the businesses to Henry County that we need. High-tech, cybersecurity, those are the businesses we need in Henry County. We have to move away from these warehouses. The eighteen-wheelers are killing our infrastructure, we don't have the tax revenue to fix our roads. Let's do the things that are going to, that are going to bring that economic development that we need. Our Development Authority can't continue to be focused on bringing warehouses to Henry County. Now, we're going to be a board that wants to attract an educated demographic to Henry County, and we want to be, we want to be a county that's going to be a player in the future. Let's do the things that make sense. Don't take these voters, the voters, the voters' rights away. They voted to have this money allocated in the Fairview commi, uh, community. It says, "Police Station, North Henry County, Fairview Area." This money cannot be used anywhere else. Please don't deny these citizens the right to have paths to protect their children.
Thank you, Commissioner. Mr. Bailey, we would now hear from you, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair and Commission Board. My name is John Bailey. I live in the Montclair Place subdivision on Fairview Road. Actually, the park is kind of like my next-door neighbor. Um, right now, Fairview Road, it was repaved recently, appreciate that, the roads were in very bad condition, but right now, we have a lot of children that walk this road from the subdivisions. We have probably six or seven subdivisions down Fairview Road beyond the park, but we have sidewalks going to the commercial district, to the Kroger and the grocery stores, but we have no sidewalks going to the neighborhoods. There are a lot of children that walk the roads right now, we have a lot of traffic coming through there, most of it is crossover traffic trying to avoid the expressway. They come down from the Cab County on Fairview Road and they come down Anvil Block Road. The ones that's coming down Fairview Road, they're running excessive speed, sixty, sixty-five miles an hour. In my subdivision, we have to play chicken to get out. Usually, once you get out onto Fairview Road, they tailgate you all the way to Anvil Block Road, because we're not going fast enough for them trying to get home. So, they're headed to East Atlanta in one fifty-five. It's a lot of traffic during rush hour. Children, the cars is swooping around you as you're going down the road, we have car carriers carrying raggedy junk cars, we have wrecker trucks on the road, and they're just flying up and down the road. We don't see anybody out there, police-wise, just try to slow these cars down, but I feel we need the sidewalks there. Some parts of Fairview Road, there is no shoulder, so you have to essentially walk in the street. So, Madam Chair, I know that you wouldn't want your children, or anyone on the board, to walk down this road during a rush hour time or any time when there's a lot of traffic flowing and there are no sidewalks. Once that park opens up in the summertime, there's nothing else on that end of the county for our children. So, they're going to be going to this park. It's going to be a splash pond and pad and all this there, so I know there's going to be a lot of traffic, foot traffic, during the day, uh, whatever, heading to the park. But right now, we have no sidewalks. So, I'm asking that you would please do something before something tragic happens to some of our children or our adults trying to walk down Fairview Road, trying to get to the park. That's all I have to say. Thank you for the time.
Thank you, Mr. Bailey. We also had Mr. Jonathan Buck to also request public comment as well.
Good morning, Ms. Chow. Uh, when I was twelve years old, I got hit by a car walking to the park. Um, it was a hit and run. Um, I remember looking at my mama while I was in the hospital, you know, and you got to understand, back then, kids played outside, so we knew how to ride bicycles, we knew how to skateboard. Kids now, we didn't have, uh, social media, we didn't have cell phone. So, we grew up knowing how to walk on the side of the street. Kids now, walk in the middle of the street. Sometimes you had to blow the horn to get kids out the street. We didn't have cell phone, we didn't have destruct, so we, we knew how to play outside and stuff. For fifteen years, I had headaches from walking through. I grew up in Atlanta, a native of Atlanta. You know, I would walk into Adam Park, over there, there are my camera throw, anybody that know the area, that's where I grew up at. So, I'm asking you, that I would not want no child to go through what I went through. I mean, in Northside, North Henry County, we have a lot of educated people. We're not a little, we, you know, I have a college degree, my neighbor got a PhD, we are very educated. You know, I'm very educated, I'm active in the community, my neighbor there just spoke, he's a mentor, so we active, I know the police officers down there at Fairview, I'm constantly telling, they got a junkyard behind us, so we constantly get eighteen-wheelers down the street. There's no street light, at least in Atlanta, there were street lights. So, we was always heard, Mom, you say, hey, make sure you home for the streetlights. Down there, there's no streetlight. So, I'm asking you, you know, if we have the funds, please, please let do the right thing, because I know that, and I'm cheap, so when you say vote for one cent cell tax, I be looking where my money going. So, if I pay for that one cent cell tax, and it's going to be put for that park and stuff, that's what I want to see. I mean, I grew up voting for murder, and a lot of time that money in Atlanta didn't go towards murder. So, if I voted one cent for that SPOS, I want to see North Henry approved, instead of moving that money down Jones Square Road. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. [applause]. Just a moment.
Mr. Burke has mentioned the police and I just want to say, um, the police have done a fantastic job, uh, bringing crime down low. We have, um, uh, very low crime in the Fairview area. We, Fairview hasn't seen a murder in over a decade, so Fairview is a safe community. About six years ago, I put a police station, um, in the most visible area of Fairview Road, and I think that having that police station at East Atlanta and Fairview has had a significant impact on reducing crime. I don't get calls from citizens regarding we don't have enough protection. I get calls saying we have too much police. So, that's how we want it. Our community is safe, crime is low, there are no murders in North Henry County, in the Fairview area, in over a decade. So, I, I just don't want to hear anybody say that we need a police station. No, the people in the south area needs a police station, not the north area. We need our kids to be safe. That's what we need in North Henry County.
Thank you, Commissioner. If we can continue to allow our public to continue to make comments, and then we'll have discussion as a board as well, so we now want to call upon Ms. Vivian Thomas.
Good day, Madam Chair and Commissioners. My name is Vivian Thomas, my address is one oh seven Bayberry Hills, McDonough, Georgia, three oh two five three. I wear many hats, so let me see which one I'm pulling out today. The first one is a mother. I am a mother of three daughters and I've lived in a community that's very safe. June, we're neighbors, you know that, we're not far apart, but we have the luxury of walking to and fro in our community, we have sidewalks available to us. I never worried when my child got on her bicycle where she was, what she was doing, or where, who was around, because I have the privilege of living in a very safe community. That's something a mother wants. There are mothers in Fairview, plenty of mothers in Fairview. My godson goes to school to Fairview Elementary School. When he spend the night with me, I take him to school, I pick him up, so I'm very familiar with that community. Second of all, I am a citizen. I moved to Henry County because of the quality Henry County brought to us. It was my choice. I didn't move to Henry County because that was public transportation, I didn't move to Henry County because there was something grossly grotesque going wrong in another area. I moved here by choice. The people in Fairview moved to Fairview by choice. It is a wonderful community. As the Commissioner has stated, the crime rate there is almost nothing, and that's because of strong communities. I thank Mr. Holmes for being a part of his community. He knows what his community needs, because he's involved in his community. Every Commissioner should take the time to walk their community, to talk with the people there, to find out what their needs are. He does. He's there with the lily, he's there with the mentors, he's there in the homeowners associations. In fact, I look at him and go, what are you doing over here? He's all around Henry. Now, that puts me to my next hat. The One Henry Project. I work with the One Henry Project, has been charged to putting together the CID for one thirty-eight of Hudson Bridge Road. One Henry. When we had the public forums we talked about, One Henry. We want to make sure both ends of Henry County has the same privilege as each other. We do not want two Henrys, three Henry, we want one Henry. If there are sidewalks in my communities, there need to be sidewalks in other communities. If there are beautiful parks in my community, there need to be beautiful parks in other communities. Now, this Commission has done exceptionally well to get a wonderful park in this area. Why would we spend the money building a wonderful park and not have adequate access to that park? That simply doesn't make sense. And I want to know, if a life is lost trying to get to and fro to that park, which one of you are willing to take the blame? Which one of you are willing to take accountability for it? We all know that money is available. We do know that Commissions had opportunities to use their budgets according to the needs in their areas. It's common. There's nothing uncommon about this request. It's money that has already been voted by the citizens and allocated by the citizens to work for the citizens. The needs of the citizens, the needs of the community determines the need of the budget and how that budget is managed. It's not the other way around. I hope you hear the voice of these citizens today and know, they need access to their parks. Their children need access to that park. The safety of our children is not negotiable. The safety of our community is not negotiable. The safety of my godson is not negotiable. We expect you to vote in favor of these sidewalks. And I bring you back to something else. One Henry again. We talk about smart growth, green space, walking space, parks, bringing in all these wonderful companies to our areas. They will not come without having a wonderful park, a place for them to go, a place for them to relax, a place of access. And I ask you, I implore you, to think about your communities, to think about your children, to think about your families, and say, is this what I want for them? We are not asking for additional money. We're not asking for money from your budgets. We're saying, let us use the money for that community for what it is for. So, I put on my last hat for today, and that's the First Vice President of NAACP. We will fight for the safety of children no matter where they are. North Henry, South Henry, East Henry, we will be there to say, children's safety is not negotiable. So, thank you for your time, and I have to leave to go to the Board of Education to fight for children again. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Thomas. Well, thank you very much. We've heard from the public comments that have been requested at this moment. We now will invite...
I think there are a couple other people that want to speak.
Okay, are there others that would like to speak? If you do, please come forward and line up, please, so that we know how many we have, so thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Carl Kemp. I actually do not live in District Five, I live in District One. My concern, if we do not approve this, if you do not approve this, is that this may have an impact in the future. Each Commissioner gets money allocated, they have a certain amount of flexibility to deal with that, that money in the, in the way that is most conducive to the welfare of the citizens in their district. And I'm concerned about the fact that when the situation changes, that a Commissioner may not have that flexibility. And, you know, our part of the county down in District One is much less developed, we don't have the same problems yet, we will. We're a growing county. And I just want to make sure that we give our Commissioners the flexibility to do the right thing in each of our districts. Thank you.
Thank you. Come forth, please state your name as well.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, my name is John Kirkpatrick, and I live in Commission District One, but my family, my son and his mom, live in Commissioner Holmes's district in District Five, and I'm here to speak in favor of the amendment here today, and about the safety issues, because they are concerned and have expressed concerns to me about their safety in being able to walk along the corridor in question. While I live in District One, I see along Highway one fifty-five where there have been pedestrians who have been hit by traffic in that area. So, those improvements in that area, as well as the improvements in the proposal here, need to be made and need to be taken into consideration and approved, and I certainly urge you to do that and do the right thing for the children of our neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good morning. My name is Tracy Felder. I am a, in District Five with Mr. Holmes. I'm a homeowner in the Montclair Place subdivision along with Mr. Buck and Mr. Bailey. They have been very active in our community in getting the word out. Um, they have been very active in our community in, um, getting the word out regarding these sidewalks. Um, as a mother and a very active, uh, person in the school system within our county, um, I urge you to use the monies that are set aside for our county to put those sidewalks in. I have two children, um, that do very, uh, do very well in school, and they're very active within our community. And for their safety and the safety of the children within our community, those sidewalks are very important. Um, I see them in other communities. My brother lives in the Eagles Landing community. Um, his community is beautified, sidewalks everywhere, appropriate lighting. So I, I don't understand why those, those assets can't be used in our community. Um, I appreciate Mr. Holmes for your, uh, ability to bring the things that you have to our community. The walkable community that we do have has been wonderful. Uh, I've seen people exercising, I've seen people, uh, of all ages, from babies to elderly, walking dogs and things of that nature. I would hate for anybody or anyone with children or any person to get hit along that, that, that corridor. Now, as far as Mr. Bailey was saying, I've, I, to get out of our neighborhood is ridiculous. The other day, leaving to take my children to school, I almost got hit, somebody going seventy, almost eighty miles an hour down Fairview. We, we watch people that are in our community, we tell them to slow down when they come into our particular neighborhood. We watch, and we are very active in our community. So I ask you and I urge you to take the funds that are there for our community and use them within our community to provide those safety and, the safety and the sidewalks that are needed. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Good morning.
Good morning. I'm Sarah Billups, and I live in District Five. I'm not in the Fairview area, but, um, I do know how very, very important it is to have sidewalks. Um, I live off of flipping, and when I see people walking, I see them walking and they're way over in the grass, and I know that it's not just cars we have to worry about. I don't know about you all, but I have an obsession about snakes. And every time I see our people walking in that grass, I say to myself, oh my god, dear god, do we need sidewalks. So I'm waiting for them to build the sidewalks that we're supposed to be getting along flipping, but I would really, really implore you to please, please put those sidewalks in. There's nothing like having our children safe. There's nothing more important than the safety of our children. We have the funds. We're not asking for anything extra. We're simply saying, move it from one place, put it someplace else, use it where it will do the most good for the people in that area. And I, I do have to say that I love my Commissioner. I mean, he, he's just really good. He fights all the time for his community. He is everywhere. Whenever there is an issue, you look up, you're gonna see Bruce Holmes there. And when he speaks and he asks for something, and it's usually for the good of the community. So I'm asking you all to please consider putting those sidewalks in, and then give a thought over to where I am, so if my car breaks down, I don't have to walk in the grass, because I am truly, truly afraid of snakes. And I think that's a real issue for our kids, too. And, and, and in the evening, we don't even want to think about it, because I sweat for people who are walking in the grass. So please, please, sidewalks, sidewalks, sidewalks.
All right, thank you, Ms. Billups. Good afternoon. Good morning, Heather.
Madam Chair, members of the Board of Commission and the citizenry that's behind me, I think what we've heard is a normal request, to be able to walk on a sidewalk and be safe. I recently completed the Citizens Police Academy, and one of the things that I was able to see as I rode one night around is that if it's bad during the daytime, when the sun starts going down, it's worse, because the judgment of people driving cars is not as good as it is when you have a bright sun and non-rainy day. I see a lot of paths, as the young lady said behind me, where people walk on a lot of our roads. We're moving in time. I've been in Henry County now fifteen years. We don't have enough places where it's safe to walk. Also, when we look at how we traverse from one county to ours and hook up with some of our larger roadways, we see sidewalks and all of a sudden they disappear. But we have something in planning called an urban sidewalks, where you see people's tracks where they're walking, which is talking about the snakes, then that tells you, we need to have sidewalks. Population's growing, we need to have sidewalks. I'm seventy-one years of age. I can't move as fast as some of these kids can move. I don't have the social media when I'm on my hand, but I do like to be safe, and I think a sidewalk, proper curving, uh, curving is essential. On April fourteenth, we're gonna move hundreds of kids to that park for Life South, that's a blood program, to have a marathon. Many of them live in that community. They're coming from communities all over Henry County, um, the next two counties, to raise money for blood in the Southern Crescent. It'd be nice to have sidewalks for people to walk on. And those are the things, by the way, that attract people to your county. When they see safety issues, like we voted for the Fire Department, Police Department, and they're both doing an excellent job, and I know, because I've been with them, and I realize that part of what they talk about, too, is sidewalks. How many times did we see balloons and crosses showing us where kids have been hurt? There's one on 138 that's been there the fifteen years that I've been here, saying, this is where my son was killed, on the way to work. So safety is important, and I know each one of you up there are gonna raise your hands and approve the continuation, because each of you depend on each other. This is our county together, it's not one against each other. All of us own the responsibility of keeping Henry County beautiful and safe. And I'm sure that all of you out there, we don't even have to keep coming up in line, we could just ask to stand if I was, uh, not out of order. I'd say all the people that believe sidewalks should be taken care of would stand now. Thank you for these matters.
All right, thank you, sir.
Madam Chair, good morning, Commissioners. My name is Annette Edwards, and I live at 551 Patilla Road, Stockbridge, Georgia, 30281. And I'm standing before you today because I am a witness in terms of the traffic and the, the traffic patterns and the speed limit that people travel on Fairview Road. And I will go back two years ago, when I was campaigning for the position I am presently holding, I was afraid to walk in that area. The traffic was horrendous, the speed limit, in fact, I would like to ask you all to consider lowering the speed limit on that road, because it's, it's too high for that area. Cars just speed by all the time. When I was out there campaigning, it was frightening. I would like to say, I represent not only forty-two thousand, uh, kids in the Henry County Board of Education, but I represent, I stand before you today pleading for every child in this county, not just the Fairview area. I would like to see sidewalks over there, because I live in the area, I've been to the park several times. It's a beautiful park. Commissioner Holmes has done a wonderful job, like most of you probably have done in your, um, in your districts, and we appreciate all that you have done, but I am here pleading for you to make the right decision. Keep not only the children in the Fairview area in mind, but think about your children in your district. What would you want for the children in your district? Wouldn't you want sidewalks to make sure your children, your grandchildren, your citizens in your district are safe? That's all we're asking for. Please consider doing the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning, Madam Chair and the Committee. Uh, my name is Beryl Burt. I live here in McDonough, but my daughter and her family live in the Fairview area. My grandson attends Fairview Elementary. When my daughter moved and bought a home in that area, the big complaint she had was there was no parks. They had to get up and drive to an area to get to a park so that my grandson could play safely. When this park was put in place, they were ecstatic. My grandson cannot wait for this park to open. He is ready, his bike and everything, skateboard, you name it. We talked about it on Saturday. Please, I am asking you, as a grandmother, this is personal for me, it's emotional. I do not want to see any child in this county, and I have other grandchildren, but this one lives right there, and he wants to participate in enjoying this park that was put together. So I would like for this committee and this commission to make sure that they do what they're supposed to do, to protect the citizens from the children right on up to the adults. Please, put the park in place, but put it in place with good sidewalk safety for all of the children and for everyone. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning, Madam Chair and Commissioners. My name is Thomas Crump, and like a couple of other people before me, three in fact, I believe, uh, I live in the first district, uh, but I want to speak now of how proud I've been, uh, the media, uh, coverage of the fact that all of you all have been to, uh, conferences and been downtown, uh, in Atlanta to, to be a part of the region and to, first time since I've been here, been eleven years, I've never seen the entire Henry County Commission be unified on an issue. And I just appeal to you listening, and all the people who live in District Five and all those who have family in District Five, for, for you all to be unified on this issue and do the right thing. Uh, in a prior life, I was a city councilman for twelve years in Gary, Indiana. I happen to have the privilege of serving as president for three of those years. And Madam Chair, I was a councilman at large. And one of the reasons why I was at large is because I was able to appeal to, uh, support the entire community, and I was able to work with every, s, every one of the six district council members. There were three of us at large. And, uh, I, I led the ticket, uh, two of the times I ran for three terms, and I did that because I felt that we were, uh, showing exemptified leadership to keep the unification on the council, to serve all the community. And I really, I know we got a lot of problems in this nation, you read every day about how divided we are, but I would hope that you all will be unified on this issue and show that in Henry County, uh, we can have elected officials who are unified and, and make this a nonpartisan issue. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good morning. Madam Chair, Board of Commissioners. My name's Darius Patillo. I'm a resident in Henry County first. I'm a father. I have two children, two small children, and, um, I'm a husband, and we're raising our kids here in Henry County. I live in the fifth district. I live on Fairview Road. I actually live in Huntcliff subdivision. So I'm concerned about my kids' safety, I'm concerned about everybody's safety. Um, this is not an abstract thing for us. Every day of my life, when I leave my subdivision, I have to get onto Fairview Road. My kids have to get on Fairview Road. This park is something we've been looking forward to. Um, I foresee that we are going to be there. We are going to be on Fairview Road. My kids are going to grow up there. And I foresee that this park will be an, a, a real centerpiece to their childhood, and I'm concerned about them, so I'm asking if the money is there for this board to vote for the sidewalks on Fairview Road. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair and the Board. I'm gonna make this very, very quick. Uh, my name is Cynthia Jenkins, and I live in Huntcliff Stock Division. I did email, um, Madam Wood concerning the, uh, the sidewalks. I've, I agree with everything everyone just said, so I'm not gonna repeat that. But I came here for clarity, and that's what I said in my email. I wanted my help in my mind, and sometimes it's messed up in my mind, I'm trying to understand what is more important than our children's safety, because this money is already there, and it's for the safety of our children. And I don't understand why it's trying to be moved in the first place. So I'm gonna sit back and I'm gonna listen, and it's gonna make sense to me why this money needs to be moved elsewhere and not be used to what it was allocated for. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there any other comments? All right, so we'll invite Mr. Burkehalter back up, and then we will have discussion
Chair, Commissioners, good morning again. In November of 2013, the voters of Henry County approved the SPOLOSP4 referendum, which included funds for District Five New Park. Construction of the District Five New Park was approved with Resolution Number 15-401. The District Five Commissioner requests additional work to be performed at the District Five New Park. The new work consists of additional pavilions and structures, and eight-foot-wide multi-use paths along Fairview Road connecting District Five New Park to the DeKalb County line. A budget amendment is necessary to transfer two million dollars from the SPOLOSP4 countywide police station, SP4013, to the SPOLOSP4 District Five New Park to cover the cost of this additional work. Anyone has any questions?
Yes, um, I would like you to really just speak to, um, the, the whole Fairview Park, um, the history, the original estimate, um, what amendments have been made, and again, you just stated the amendment that we were requesting, because I, I don't believe that everyone understands the full history. The other thing I would like, ask that you just, again, clarify, as Ms. Cynthia just asked, could you clarify how we came up with our list of projects, um, here for the SPOLOSP4, um, processes that we're in right now?
Yes, ma'am, and I'll start with the, the second question first, okay, just for the, the overall SPOLOSP program. Uh, the projects were identified for the SPOLOSP4 program through a committee, okay? The committee was formed, each Commissioner had two members that were put onto a committee. Uh, the, the chair had one person, and the cities, if I'm not mistaken, had one or two representatives on the committee. The committee, in fact, Mr. Cash is, is, is in the audience, and he was elected the chairman of the SPOLOSP4 committee. We held two town hall meetings in each district during the process before the vote. The public was invited to give input on what, what was needed in the, in their district or in the community. The SPOLOSP committee took the notes, used us as staff. As staff, what we did is we provided the committee with, uh, budget numbers on what something would cost, okay, because we had limited funds. We started, uh, basically looking at everything in the county, then we looked at projections on what we're gonna collect, so at that point, we had to start funneling down the process, okay? But it was a committee that, that voted on the, the projects on the list, uh, and that was presented to the Board of Commissioners along with the budgets. So that's, that's the evolution of the, the SPOLOSP4 program. And Chair, if you don't --
The history about the park and its budget and so forth.
The original budget on the park, yes, ma'am, was four million eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Uh, there was a piece of property that we had identified, initially put in the park on. Due to several reasons, we could not close on that piece of property, and the, the, the person that owned that property, um, did not meet some of the milestones that we needed to secure that property. In the meantime, there was some property available on Fairview Road and the Anvil Block, which belonged to the Board of Education. The Board secured that piece of property, which was larger acreage-wise than the original piece that we were looking at. And then when the budget amendment that, uh, was approved in Resolution 15-401 also included an additional two million dollars to make the total project six million eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars as we sit today. This is a request for an additional two million dollars for the multi-use paths.
Any other questions?
Ron. Uh, it concerns me about all these safety questions coming up now. When the, the park was designed, was all this taken in consideration for these paths?
No, sir.
Okay.
The paths, excuse me, there are paths within the park, yes, sir. Okay, but, uh, with this resolution, no, sir.
Okay. Uh, the next question I have, um, I know we took two million out of the capital and put into this park before, and it was -- put into this park before, and it was a mission to me that we weren't gonna need but $2 million to build this precinct. Are you under the impression that we don't need that precinct in the fifth district?
I'm the commissioner of this district. Can I make the difference?
Excuse me, I got, I got the question. I got the floor.
Let's, let's please allow order, please, and allow the commissioner to complete his statement, please.
Madam Chair, may I ask, was that a question for staff?
Sure you may.
Concerning, um, Mr. Burkhalter, on the spot, certainly, I think the need for that police precinct would be something most appropriate for our police department to make that determination. As you know, Mr. Burkhalter is just the capital projects manager, and his job is just to make sure that the projects are constructed. So we can certainly follow up with the police department to determine what their needs are for that area, but I would certainly ask that we allow staff an opportunity to review that, that question and then respond back to you.
I've already explained the reason why we put the, put the park in, I mean, the police station in SPOLOSP. At the time, the City of Stockbridge was looking at creating their own police station, so we put the police station in the Fairview area as a hedge against the City of Stockbridge moving forward with their own precinct. That didn't happen. In fact, they want to go back to the old SDS agreement right now, as it stands today. So that's the reason why the police station was put in there. I don't understand the reason why we're asking all these odd questions, because the, the, the reason why we're here today is the, is for the protection of our citizens and the protection of those kids. And, and I've already confirmed that, that the, the, the trails are legal. We have, that area is a very dense community. It's highly populated, and given the fact that that is a destination park, these citizens need trails to keep them safe. That's just the bottom line.
Well, Commissioner, we've allowed you to have comments on, we're still in the comments section, questions from the other board, and I, because I have a comment as well, so, okay, we'll go, and then, and then Commissioner Clemens, okay?
Ms. Matthews.
Yes, sir.
Has anybody looked into the possibility of getting some grant money that we could utilize to build these sidewalks?
No, sir. We have not looked into any type of grant funding for this type of sidewalk installation. It's my understanding that these will be multi-use paths that will be constructed outside of the park to go towards DeKalb County. The funding also will be for additional pavilions, so there are sidewalks within the conceptual plan of the existing park. This will be multi-use paths for individuals who may be coming to the park from Fairview Road and the surrounding area.
All right, Commissioner Clemens.
I have a question, Mr. Burkhalter, in reference to what's legal in SPOLOSP transfer. I know that we're governed by how we can use the money, where it can be transferred to, whether a project is on the books or not on the books or voted on. Is this a legal transfer based on that?
Commissioner Clemens, may I ask that we have our county attorney respond to that one as well?
Okay.
Thank you.
Ms. Commissioner, transferring money during the SPOLOSP program is perfectly legal. There's, there's nothing improper about transferring money during the SPOLOSP program. However, there's a however. All of the items listed on the SPOLOSP resolution, which is Resolution 13181, all of the tier-one items, we are lawfully required to complete them. Whether we complete them out of SPOLOSP money or other money doesn't matter. So ultimately, where the county could find itself in trouble is all of these interim transfers. If we leave a project out there with no money to complete it, we could be obligated to complete that project from some other source. For instance, if we leave, if you had an item that was, well, I mean, we're talking about the police station. So the police station, north end of county, Fairview area, the, the fact that we're transferring money into or out of that item today doesn't, doesn't really invoke any legal problems. But when the SPOLOSP ends, if that project has not been completed, then we would be obligated to complete that project out of general fund, or put it on the next SPOLOSP ballot for the voters to specifically remove it. That's really what our options are. So we can't just put our hands up and say we don't want to do a project. So the short answer is, yes, we can transfer money now. It's kind of like credit card debt. You can, you can use a new credit card to pay off an old credit card debt, but at some point, we gotta even up, and we've gotta even up with all these projects, or the voters will have to vote in a subsequent SPOLOSP to remove that item.
And, and that's, and that's important, that was important to me, because when we change, in two years, we're gonna have another election, and another commissioner's gonna come in that don't have SPOLOSP funds. I have no SPOLOSP funds. But there are projects that are out there that I would want to transfer funds to do projects for my constituents as well. So the question, I asked that question because I want to make sure that this is not saying that the police station goes away. This just says that this police station will still be a priority, a priority one, whether it comes out of general fund or whether we put it on the next SPOLOSP. So I just want to make that clear, that this does not mean that this police station goes away.
Okay, we got a comment. We're gonna come to, go, go, we'll go to Commissioner Holmes, and it will come to Commissioner Wilson.
And that's been the case in every single SPOLOSP.
Absolutely.
I mean, this is not, this is not a unique situation. In every single SPOLOSP, there are projects that have gone from SPOLOSP one to SPOLOSP two, there's, there are projects that were on SPOLOSP one that, that still haven't been completed. So this is not an issue. This is not an issue whatsoever. The next SPOLOSP we'll, we'll be working on within the next couple of years, and, you know, if Stockbridge decides at that particular time that they're gonna move forward with their own precinct, I mean, their own police department, then we'll put it back on the next SPOLOSP. I don't understand the issue. This, these are funds that were allocated, voted on specifically for the Fairview area. They can't be moved anywhere else.
All right, thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Wilson.
Question, Commissioner Prince. How long do we have the Stockbridge precinct for? Is it on a year-to-year basis, or how's that, how's that work?
The Stockbridge precinct, we have-
What should we direct that question to, staff or the county manager?
It's my understanding that we, the-
County paid a portion towards the Stockbridge precinct. I do not know if we leased that out on a year-to-year basis. That's something that I would have to actually pull the contract and, and make a determination on. But I do know that, right now, and I don't think that we do, I don't think that we're scheduled to have that lease expire. So I would need to pull that contract to give you a good answer on that.
I can actually answer that question. We, we paid half million dollars upfront, and we leased the building from the City of Stockbridge. What happens, we can lease that building indefinitely until the police department is formed in the City of Stockbridge. At this time, I don't know of any plans for the city to start a police department. We had a long, this was a two-year debate between the City of Stockbridge and Henry County, and it, it looks like that the City of Stockbridge probably will not start a police department until the next SPOLOSP. And it's my, my understanding that they will, at that time, put in SPOLOSP to get vehicles and things of this nature. And at that time, my understanding is, we could still use that precinct. We would have to share it, but at that point, we would need to really take a good, hard look at where we're going to move to.
And the City of Stockbridge is not here, so I just, and just ask that we have clarifying questions before we get to the motion?
Yeah, I do. Now, I got a couple of questions, Ron. Do we have a price for what it would cost to build a precinct?
Commissioner, that, that would be a, before I could answer that question, I, I would need to do a needs analysis with the, if, if we're gonna replace in kind what we have in Stockbridge, or are we talking about supplementing? And, and the reason I say that, Commissioner, that's kind of a rhetorical question. I would need to do a needs analysis with the police department and basing it on $250 to $275 a square foot, okay, to, to see what kind of a building we could get for the $2 million.
And one more question. Do we have a price for what it's gonna cost to put the, the paths and the sidewalks in? Do we have that process?
We do not have the price. The first step, we did a rough budget on what it would cost. It's, it's approximately three and a half miles, and that's on both sides of the road, eight feet wide. We looked at some of the costs that Rocky incurred for the, the Fairview Road. That number would probably be somewhere around $1.75 to $1.8 million. Again, the first step of the process would be to put out an RFP to hire an engineer, okay, so we could get the engineer drawings for the multi-use paths, and then at that point, we'll put it out for bid and get the exact numbers, cost.
And also, you can't talk about building a police station and not talk about funding operations. That's gonna add you a couple more millions on, on top of construction of a, of a, of a, of a structure. So, again, I think this $2 million will be far better used for the protection of our children, and it's a, it's a priority. If I had to put them both together, this would far outweigh the need of a police, a police station in the area that is relatively safe.
All right, well, yes, more questions, because I, I'm looking forward to discussion, so I can also make my points as well after the motion. Go ahead, if it's question.
It's not a question, it's discussion.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Before we get into further discussions. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Burkhalter. The floor is now open for a motion.
So move.
A second.
We have a first and a second. Now, the floor is open for discussion. And let me begin, if I may. Let me just clearly state that, yes, I am very concerned about the safety of our children and all citizens and adults. Let me also say that I am just as concerned about District Five, Four, Three, Two, and One equally. When I accepted this role as chair, I began to think about already the things that each community really, really would benefit from, and I am fully committed to working with every commissioner sitting on this board. I am also very committed to understanding the fiscal responsibilities of this county. I am new to this board. I am a business lady. What I do believe is so empowering is that when this SPOLOSP was approved, there was strong citizen input. I live in District Four. I attended the meetings. I involved myself in the process. I was part of those to respect those that identified the priorities of what has been approved by the voters of Henry County. Yes, we have countywide projects. Yes, we have district projects. My thoughts at this point is, this project that we're speaking about, the park, it is phenomenal. I have driven there. It is beautiful. There is already some sidewalks around Fairview Road. There are parks, there are some sidewalks inside the park. What I'm speaking about now, these are some new additions that is not, and was not included in the original scope of the project. When this first came to the table, the $2 million that we're now speaking about was supposed to come from the intersection improvement of East Atlanta and Thurman Road at Flat Rock. That is a safety concern. That is an intersection. That is an opportunity to improve the roads in this area. Now, we're speaking about moving $2 million from a, a, a public safety facility. We don't know what the City of Stockbridge is gonna do, but we do need to identify that these have been priorities that the citizens have identified. So I am in favor of, if we call it sidewalks, additional pavilions, I hope that we will even have even greater network trails throughout Henry County. But what I'm not in favor of is taking money of, of a new scope of a project and allocating it to something that the voters have not really included in their original scope. I definitely am already working at the Atlanta Region Commission, talking about, how do we get more funding? We're talking about, we're speaking about regarding SPOLOSP funds. These, again, are one cent sales tax that our citizens have voted for, for specific projects. And yes, I do believe that there should be flexibility. But what I do not agree is that if there is a new addition, new scope of project, it does not take precedence. So again, that's my position on this. I do look forward to looking for, how do we find the funding to provide the sidewalks and the paths here in District Five? But I will tell you, as has already been noted, that there are some major transportation issues. There are sidewalk issues there, and I want to commend Commissioner Holmes. It is beautiful up there in District Five, and I agree that District Five needs to be a role model for some of our other industries, our districts, when it comes to economic development, when it talks about being a walkable community, when it talks about having the right infrastructure up there. But again, what we've got to do is identify where would the funding come outside of projects and SPOLOSP funds that have already been identified. Do we have a capital budget that will support this? Because it sounds like this is the beginning. It could expand beyond two, additional $2 million in the future. If we don't have it in the capital, where can we find it in the general fund? And we're going through the budget season as we speak right now. Several thousands and millions of, of, of funds that can't be funded are already being discussed right now. So again, I am a commissioner. I have one of the six votes. I will tell you that I will support the majority of this. This is a nonpartisan issue. It is not a district issue. I am looking across this whole county, looking to serve each and every one of you, especially those that are watching as well. So those are my comments. I now pass the floor on to other commissioners for, for conversation.
I just want, I just want to say, to all the voters, look what you elected. You elected somebody that is not for our community. This is somebody that's not gonna take this county in the direction that it needs to go. The voters clearly voted to have this money in District Five in the Fairview area. And I can't believe that, she says she's for something, but she's against it. It's disappointing to me to look over at this particular chairman. I actually had a lot more respect for the old chairman. At least I knew where he stood. This chairman, I'm losing, I'm losing respect for every single day that passes, because there is no sign of any leadership. There is no sign of any vision. Matter of fact, I asked her, what was your vision? Because she's asked board members over and over again for their vision. But when I asked her for, for her vision, she couldn't articulate a vision. She didn't articulate a vision. Then she calls me back, and she says, oh, I have a vision. I just can't tell you how to get there. Then she tells me she thinks global. But what she's saying right now is not global thinking. If you're looking for economic development, and the money is in that particular district, why would you vote against it? Why would you speak against it? That's not leadership. Chairman, if you support the safety of these African-American kids, support them. Don't look to send our money down to, down to, down to the southern part of the county. We've gone through that for far too long. This community is on the upswing. This money is in our district, is in our budget to fund the safety, the safety apparatus for this district. There is no higher priority than, than the safety of these kids, and these trails are gonna give them the safety that they need to get back and forth to the park. So I'm sorry. I just had to, I had just had to let, let you know. I'm just, I just don't, I just don't think you're the right person for the job. I don't. I mean, that song and dance you just gave is just absolute, absolutely ludicrous. Go get a grant. I have the money in my budget. It's right here. District Five, Fairview Road, police station. We've already allocated $2 million towards it. The reason why we had to allocate $2 million is because costs have increased, and they continue to increase. That's what I told these commissioners years ago. We need to act right now while costs are still low. Costs are going up. We have a, we have a stadium being worked on in Cobb. There's one being worked on downtown. That's what's driving up the cost of construction in Atlanta. Be a leader. Support these communities. Support every community. Don't just support Eagles Landing and McDonough. I listened to you. I, I read, I read your, your state of the county, Stockbridge and Fairview were afterthoughts in your State of the Union, which was unbelievable to me. There is nothing happening anywhere else in the county but in Fairview area, in the warehouses that you support on 155. If you're gonna lead, lead. If you're for economic development, show the people you're for economic development. We need a true leader. Don't just go down and give us the song and dance. All that talking is not working in Henry County. We need somebody that's gonna act. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Other comments? Okay, we've had a, yes?
I don't have enough information from the SPOLOSP committee, from the SPOLOSP, when, if we, if we take this money and move it, if then we have to build this fire state, I mean, this police precinct. Is there a time limit? I mean, do we, we have to build it in five years, 10 years?
No, we just talked about that.
Is it?
The law doesn't say you have to build it within a specific period of time, but you do have to build it. And I suppose if, if challenged, I, I suppose a, a court would probably say you have to have- And I suppose if, if challenged, I, I suppose a, a court would probably say you have to have, there has to be some reasonable time in which you complete these projects, but I, there, there's no specific time limit.
There are projects still on the SPOS list from, from SPOS One.
Fire Station Eight was on there.
There's, there shouldn't be any issues transfer, transferring money that is allocated to District Five by this, by our voters. The voters of Henry County voted to have these monies directly into Fairview Road. Why are we having these arguments?
Oh, I'm not having an argument.
I'm not talking, I'm just, I'm talking.
Okay, just one person at a time. Just listen, let's listen, let's listen and be respectful.
I don't have, I'm not arguing, Bruce, I'm, I've got concerns. We, we're gonna take money, we're gonna move it from a precinct, we're gonna put it over here to walking paths, and they want us to, we have to build it, but we don't know what it's gonna cost to build it. Then we can postpone it for five, ten more years, what's that cost gonna be? What's the cost of, of the paths gonna be? We don't have that cost. And, and so that's where I'm confused, what, what it's gonna cost to do this, and I don't see any numbers. And I don't know, I don't know how long we're gonna be occupying the, the precinct and Stockbridge, and what's the growth of the police department's gonna be in the next three to four years? And if we run out of room in Stockbridge, what we gonna do with them? That's where I'm confused, I'm not, I'm not against your walking paths, don't get me wrong. I don't have the numbers, I don't have people putting input on the cost and what we're gonna do if we do outgrow the precinct and Stockbridge.
This is what's funny to me.
So, I'm.
Okay, just a moment, okay, excuse me, excuse me, we wanna hear from Commissioner Clemens at the time.
I just want to clarify that Fire Station Eight was on SPOS One, we're on SPOS Four, it never got built with SPOS dollars. So, it went four different SPOS, SPOS are six years, and Fire Station Eight never got built with SPOS dollars. I'm still looking for the money that was allocated for it in SPOS One, so that I can move it somewhere else in SPOS, in District Two. We had to go to general fund budget to get the money to build it. So, I don't think that an issue of, and this is just my comment, of where we're gonna get it from, if it gets built, should be an issue now. It wasn't an issue when we needed a fire station twelve years ago.
But there is a district, and there's a countywide project though in District Two, which we all, it's, it's our project.
This is both the same. This is a, this is a district, this is a countywide fi- um, police station, that was a countywide fire station, and it's still about public safety.
I understand the public safety aspect of that, but when we don't have projections from PD, we don't have projections from.
We know the trails are large.
We, we don't have the numbers for there, so I would.
One person at a time, please, so, go ahead, Commissioner Wilson, and then we'll allow, um, Commissioner Holmes, and then I like to make a comment.
I would, I, I'd make a motion to table it till we get some numbers together and see what projections are to everybody, see what we need to be in two years from now. And we, what kind of grants are available that we can do this, because.
Why would we need grants for that?
Excuse me, excuse me, let's, let's, this is what this whole, the good thing is, is that this is a good board that has opinions that they need to be able to state. So, I want, okay, so I hear a, a thought from Commissioner Wilson, I wanna hear from Commissioner Prince, and, and actually anybody else who's got any comments to make, including myself, and then we'll move towards where we are with the motion.
I have, I have no comments, Chairman.
Okay, any additional comments?
I have no comments.
Um, this is why I will tell you that I'm concerned about SPOS in general. We've got SPOS projects that apparently are here, that haven't actually been deployed or installed or built. We've got questions now that we're trying to add more money to an existing SPOS project. And again, we don't know where the funding is going to eventually come, short term and long term. So, I would just say that these are good questions that need to be discussed. So, I wanna hear from Commissioner Barron, I wanna revisit the motion, and then we'll know where to go from here. Commissioner Barron, any other comments?
I don't really have any other comments. Um, I'm not convinced we're not, don't need that precinct, that's all the comment I'm gonna make.
Okay, any other comments, Commissioner Wilson?
I would say I'd make the motion to table until I can figure out where, where we can get some input from the police department, Stockbridge, and get, that's where I would, I would table it till we get more input.
All right, wait a minute, then Commissioner, Commissioner Holmes, um, I think you originally made the motion, so we have to have his permission to.
I don't agree with, um, tabling it. We have the money, I don't understand where all the talk about grants and all those things are coming from. The money is in District Five's budget. Uh, Ron does have an estimate on what the trails are gonna cost, it'll cost one point two, one point three million dollars to do the trails. Um, these trails are legal under SPOS, according to our attorney. So, I don't understand what the pushback is. Um, this is a, a, a public safety issue for our community. And, you know, to deny these residents the ability to be safe is not what we were elected to do.
Well, thank you, um, I'm gonna ask our county attorney to kinda give me a reminder of, since we have an amended, um, motion on the best way to perceive, so that I'm in order.
You, you had a, you had a motion to approve, now you have a motion to table, and the rules require the motion to table be voted on first, before you refer back, refer back to the original motion.
Okay, so we have an amended motion to table, um, this amendment that is being discussed. Um, uh, we have a, a motion, need a second. No second, okay, the motion failed. All right, we're back to the original motion, which is to approve this budget amendment. Um, and we had a second, we've had discussion, all in favor, raise your hand. Three. All in opposition, raise your hand. Three. So, we will move on to the next item. Okay, well, at this time, uh, we did see Mr. Mosely, um, to come in, and so, Mr. Mosely, we now will invite you in before we, um, move, uh, move on to the next item regarding our county attorney.
Sorry, I just wanted to make sure my presentation's loaded.
Okay, and if you're not, then we wanna keep things moving. Okay. Well, while we're waiting, um, we're gonna ask Mr. Jock Satter if you would come forth right now regarding the resolution authorizing execution acceptance of the ingress, egress easement regarding the Technical College System of Georgia.
Good morning, Chair, members of the Board. Uh, as you will probably recall, in November of last year, the Board adopted a resolution with respect to the SPOS item regarding the Southern Crescent Technical College. The, the SPOS resolution included an allocation of five million dollars towards a technical college in, in Georgia, in Henry County. The resolution had a condition requiring that in order to dedicate or to vote, to spend that money, the county had to receive a valid property interest from the state or some other org- some other entity. And in November of last year, the Board authorized the acceptance of an easement and satisfaction of that valid property interest requirement. We didn't vote on specifically what that easement was, and we didn't authorize the Chairman to execute the easement. We have received now the easement from the Technical College System of Georgia, it's actually from the State Properties Commission, and that's the easement brought to you today, and today, we would be looking for a resolution authorizing the Chair to execute that easement on behalf of the county. And it's essentially just an access drive. Uh, the question will probably be asked of me, is that easement worth five million dollars? Absolutely not, that easement might be worth five thousand dollars. Uh, the easement itself has very little, if any, value. It, yes, sir? Well, we're not really paying for the easement, what we're doing, the, the SPOS called for a contribution of five million dollars towards a technical school.
But we won't have ownership in the technical.
We will not have ownership, no, we would, we would have an easement to the, access to property. The state, the Technical College System of Georgia will own the building, the state will own the property. And i- if you recall from November, sort of the, the, the rub in this thing was that the state is using general obligation bond money to, to build this property. In order for them to use that bond money, they are required by the terms of the bond to own the property where they build the project. So, for, they, they can't convey title to us, we have to have some ownership interest in order to contribute. And this was the only way we could make this, make this work at the time. And if the Board desires to move forward, then we would authorize the easement.
So, my question is, um, under SPOS, anything that we invest SPOS dollars in, that we would have to have ownership interest?
No, sir, that's not the law in Georgia. Georgia allows you to contribute SPOS money to projects, even if you don't have ownership interest, in limited circumstances. And this would qualify, uh, for instance, we can put, as, as long as a state owns the property, we can put money into it if it's state-owned, there's some limitations to that. But this would be a lawful SPOS expenditure if we satisfy that valid property interest requirement. And it's my opinion that this easement would satisfy it. Granted, we don't own much, if anything.
Patrick, you just said that the easement is worth five thousand dollars, but we're gonna vote today to, 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 um, pay for that, pay five million dollars for that easement.
Well, we're not really buying the easement, they're, they're gonna convey the easement to us without a check. And then, when time comes for us to make our contribution to the Technical College, we would make our contribution. And I know the Technical College finance people have had some discussions over the past several months with Mr. Oletta about timing of those contributions, and I frankly don't know where that would be. I think, if I'm not mistaken, we're, we're still a good ways away from making our contribution. But I don't, I don't really remember.
So, I, I, I say that because I just want the people to watch how differently these folks vote on something that, um, that our community, most of the people in our community won't even benefit from. We're about to pay five million dollars to purchase an easement for a technical sc- college that's funded by the state of Georgia, with the taxpayers' money. And I just want you to watch how this vote goes today, and watch how the Chairman votes, and see where her interests are. They're not, they're not with you, you're gonna see where her interests are and all the people she owes, right here.
Any other questions? Okay, um, the floor is now open for a motion.
Vote to a person.
We have a motion. We have a second. Now, it's time open for a discussion. Any comments? Well, let me just say, um, that regarding this particular authorization that we're speaking about, um, I do want to note that I am a former, um, Chair of the Southern Crescent Technical College. Um, I am also very, and have been very involved with the education of our children throughout Henry County. Um, very much involved with the College and Career Academy, was part of that steering committee to ensure that all of our children here in Henry County has an opportunity for what we call dual enrollment. And dual enrollment allows students to actually, while they're in high school, to also gain college credits. So, this is also an opportunity for workforce development here for the county of here in Henry County. To say that this may be just for some of our, our students here in, in the community is not true. I do know that there's been a partnership with the Board of Education to make sure that our children have transportations to this College and Career Academy, which is now linked to the Southern Crescent Technical College, for those that do want to attend the college. Because of my involvement with the Southern Crescent Technical College, I wanted to be transparent to you, but I'm also very committed to being unbiased for the county and every district and every citizen, so I will abstain from this vote. So, at this time, are there any other questions or comments?
I have a comment, when this was passed, um, a couple of months ago, I was not a Commissioner at that time, and I just wanna say I was not an opponent of giving five million dollars to this then, and I'm not now. Um, this is to support, um, industrial and manufacturing careers in the warehouse district, which I'm totally against, because my constituents have said it's a big box swindle, and they have warehouse anxiety. Um, so I definitely don't support it, and I just wanna say this has nothing to do with today, but I wasn't a supporter of it nine months ago.
And, um, let me clarify, if I may, to that point, um, the Southern Crescent Technical College is not just for logistics only. Um, actually, it has health, um, and allied, um, health allied, um, industries that it's focused on. Um, it does have other opportunities for high-tech type opportunities that are associated with it, with the Cisco system. And so, again, it is not to strongly only support logistics, but an array of different colleges and careers based on industries, target industry studies that we've had, and feedback from the businesses here in this community. So, I wanted to make that clarification as well. Commissioner Prince?
I just wanna make a comment real quick, and I, I hear what District Two's saying, but, you know, I, my career started at Griffin Tech, which is Southern Crescent Technical College. And I, I, I do take issue with saying that these are not going to be upstanding members of the community and that we can't excel. Um, I've had a very. I've had a very good career, I think very successful in my lifetime. Um, but it did start at tech school, and I, you know, I, I hope that other people can see that this is a beginning point for many people. And a lot of people don't want to go to college, and it's a good alternative for them. And, you know, sometimes, you know, I started there, and then I end up going to college, and then working up to a master's. But we've got to give these other people an opportunity, and what else are we going to do? If somebody doesn't wanna go to college, are we just McDonald's, is that, is that the end of the road? So, I, I think that we need to take a step back and, and, and not say these aren't the kind of people and jobs that we want here. Just, it's just a stepping stone and a starting point for many, many people in this community. With that, our floor.
Yeah.
It should be state-funded, and our citizens shouldn't be obligated to, to pay, pay five million dollars for an easement. I just don't, I just don't agree with it.
Okay, Commissioner Clemens?
And I'm gonna clarify, but I'm not saying that those jobs or that the school is not great. I'm a former educator, I have wrote grants for programs to subsidize people who can't go to a four-year institution, wrote GED grants. I'm not saying that, I'm saying five million dollars of county money is not the right way to put it. I'm also saying that there, the federal government has more money than we do, they can fund it, that's what they're supposed to do. The state has more money than we do, this is their program, and they are not short of money. Why is Henry County giving them five million dollars?
Why would we save money for that? I mean, it seems like it'd be an easier, um, hurdle to get over by getting grant money for a technical school that's funded by the state.
I would like to see them give five million dollars to the Board of Education in Henry County.
Excuse me, one Commissioner at a time, please, Commissioner Holmes had the floor, and then we'll allow you, Commissioner Clemens, if you will. Okay, Commissioner Holmes, I'm sorry, could you please continue?
You know, I mean, you, you guys are talking about getting, you know, getting grant money for sidewalks where I have the money in my budget, but now you wanna fund a state, um, organization, which it would be a lot easier to get money from the state or the federal government for the tech school. We shouldn't, we shouldn't be obligated to invest, um, uh, SPOS money from our citizens' hard, you know, hard work into something that's totally funded by the state. I mean, that should be against everything we do as Commissioners.
Okay, one, I do have one, go ahead, Commissioner Barron.
Um, I'd like to go back to, read the resolution, this five million dollars was set aside in SPOS. It was actually voted on by the taxpayers. And just like everything else we've talked about this morning, these projects have to be completed. Now, this was five million dollars set aside in capital projects for the county, and it was voted on. And to sit here and deny it now is unwanted.
At the time, at the time, we thought we were gonna have ownership interest. But it came about that we, that, um, we don't have ownership interest because of the way the state is funding it. So, I just don't agree with putting county money into a project for an easement, five million dollars of our SPOS money on a technical school where they can get grant money in that, for, you know, from the state and the federal government, I just don't agree, we should move in that direction.
Okay, um, any other comments and questions? Commissioner Wilson, yes?
Patrick, so, if we don't put the five million dollars toward that, it leaves us in the same boat, right? We'll have to.
Not necessarily, this is a, a quirk in the SPOS project list resolution, and I think you've got that in your, in your package. If you look at Exhibit, or if you look at the Resolution thirteen one eighty-one, which should be in your package, there's an Exhibit A, which has a spreadsheet that shows the countywide project list. And there are some footnotes to that, and that's really what we're here talking about, are the footnotes. One footnote says, "Funding of technical school building, subject to a valid property interest being conveyed," and that's what we're talking about today. There's a second footnote that reads as follows. "Should the applicable condition for the technical school and/or the I-75 interchange," because that's a different issue, "fail to be satisfied within five years of the date of SPOS approval, the designated funds shall be applied first to completing any Tier One projects and thereafter." Tier One projects, and thereafter to Priority Two projects, as determined by the board." So theoretically, that five million dollars, if, if we don't resolve the valid property interest by the fifth year following this adoption of the SPOLOST resolution, which would be, I guess, November of next year, then that five million dollars would then be made available to complete your other Tier One projects.
I have something to say.
Okay, comments?
I wanna just say to my fellow commissioners, you guys all know that we're having a budget issue. You guys all know that there are things on the SPOLOST projects that were not completed that keep rolling over. SPOLOST is gonna come up again. When I read this months ago, it said that we would have, and what the voters voted on, that we would have an interest in this college, we would have an interest in this building. We're gonna spend five million dollars, and I'm gonna make it known, in something we're not gonna have an interest in. And we're still gonna be in a rut with our budget, raising taxes to try to get us out of it, when we've got five million dollars right now that we can hold for this county. Why would we vote to give it away? And if you vote today to give it away, let that be on your conscience, because we still have, the attorney just said, that if we keep this five million dollars, that we would have this to use to complete those projects that we don't have the money to complete. So you need to really make a conscious decision and make the best use of taxpayers' dollars. I'm a commissioner, I'm a business owner, I'm a homeowner, I pay taxes, and I am very adamant about, we need money, and it does not have to come out of taxpayers' pockets, when we have five million dollars right here that we're about to give away to something we won't even have an interest in, other than we help some students go to technical college, where the state is doing that every day. We can do that by volunteering, we can do that by public service. We got somebody coming up here to talk about the warehouses that are in District Two, where we have warehouse anxiety. How about they raise two million dollars for my district? 'Cause I don't have a park with trails. I got a two-hundred-and-four acre desert, but we got five million dollars right here that we're willing to vote to give away.
Thank you. Commissioner Prince?
To perfect the record, um, we can't use SPOLOST funds to put into the general fund to, uh, lower taxes. I, I just wanted to perfect, I'm sorry, just wanna perfect the record. Okay, I'm sorry, all right. But, just as a perfection of the record, um, and it's, um, not to correct the commissioner, but we, we cannot use SPOLOST funds to put into the general budget.
You're absolutely correct. Even, even with this condition, those funds would still be limited to SPOLOST projects. And, and I'll say this, I, I can't sit here and tell you with any hundred percent certainty that that condition is really valid or not. You don't, it's unusual for a SPOLOST project list to have a condition. I've never seen one before, I've talked to the ACCG, they've never seen one before. The SPOLOST law doesn't say, the only conditions the SPOLOST law calls for are projects that become infeasible, that become infeasible because of reasons outside of your control. And we, we really don't know how that condition would apply, but under the theory that the voters get what they voted for, I think the condition should apply, that if we can't work out the property interest, then we would, we would swallow that money.
Wait a minute.
I'm sorry. If you vote on it, if you approve the easement today, that is a sufficient valid property interest to satisfy the condition.
So we have an easement, but then we have ownership in the building.
You don't own the building, but a valid, an easement is a valid property interest in Georgia. We've, we've been through that legal analysis, we even had the Attorney General's Office involved in it, and they've all agreed, and I agreed with them as well, that a, an easement would legally satisfy that condition. Now whether it is sufficient for this board is a decision y'all get to make, but an easement would be a legal satisfaction of that, of that requirement.
I believe that, um, that money could be better used in, um, over at the airport. I think we should be investing, uh, citizens' money, um, where we're gonna get a return on investment. And I think having a viable airport will bring, um, economic development that Henry County needs, and help increase our, our commercial tax base, which is gonna help us reduce the burden, the tax burden on our residents. So, I'm all in supporting moving that money over to the, um, to the airport.
Uh, we have comments and questions. Um, other question I have is that we're currently, this, this has already been stated as a resolution, correct? Could you clarify what exactly we are doing through this authorization? Because I understand that this has been discussed and voted on by the previous board, and I do understand that we have a new board. I understand that there seems to be some clarification that's been needed, um, so that people will have a clear understanding. We hear recommendations of how this money should be used and so forth, I just wanted to, again, get a final clarification before we take a vote.
The previous board adopted a resolution that, in short, said, "We agree that a valid property interest, or that an easement would be a sufficient valid property interest." That's what the previous board said. You're not necessarily bound by that. Uh, you're, you're not lawfully required to continue to agree. In fact, you're, as a general rule, you can't be told how to vote, period. Um, but the previous board, and I'll, I'll give you a little background, the reason we brought that to the board before was to allow the board to have a discussion about whether or not an easement would be enough for us to continue our work with the technical college. I didn't wanna see either the county use its resources, or frankly, the technical college use its resources, to work through this problem if the board was going to say an easement's not enough. Now, I'd, my expectation, quite frankly, was that after the board voted in November, I would receive from the technical college the easement to bring back to the board. I anticipated that to be done much quicker than it was. I didn't get the easement from the technical college until, or from the State Properties Commission, until much later. And I understand now, which I wasn't aware of at the time, was the process they have to go through. There is a, a relatively complicated process the state has to go through before they can provide that easement to us. So, the, the first discussion we had back in November was really the same discussion we're having today. Is, is an easement sufficient? Are we prepared to make the contribution to the technical college based upon receipt of an easement? We're not buying an easement, that's really not what we're doing. I, I'm not saying that it's not a fair way to look at it, but we're not purchasing the easement. They will grant us an easement, and we will then contribute that money toward the construction of the school. And I don't have the figures with me today, and I, I looked to see if I did. We talked about the total contribution at the November meeting, and I want to say, somebody may be able to correct me, that the total cost the state was anticipating was something in the neighborhood of twelve mil- twelve million dollars. I don't know if any of y'all remember that, but...
Oh, I can't remember, but it's...
We did, we, we obtained fifteen?
I have the ninety.
We, we did obtain, we requested at the time, the technical college gave us some stuff, and Mr. Oletta's telling me he thinks maybe it went up to nineteen million, five of us would, five of which would be our money.
Are you saying we're gonna, we're gonna give them five million dollars for them to grant us the easement? That's what you're saying?
No, we're gonna grant them, they're gonna grant us the easement as soon as they finish the proj-...
If we don't, if we don't give them the five million, will they still grant us the easement?
There wouldn't be any reason for us to accept it. We don't want the easement if we're not gonna contribute the money into the school. So, I mean, we, we have no desire to, I don't, I'm not saying that it's not a fair way to look at it, but that there's not a, there's not really a, we're not, it's not structured as a real estate transaction. Our contribution will be made at whatever point of progress of construction that it happens, I don't know exactly. That, I mean, that remains to be resolved. Uh, but there were, they, their contribution was substantially more than our contribution. And I don't know if they'll continue with their contribution, or how much they'll continue without our five million dollars. I don't know the answer to that question, I've not had that discussion with anybody.
Okay. We've had a, a motion and a second, and we've had discussion. Um, we're now, um, going to move, the floor's now open for a motion for approval.
I've already had a motion.
I mean, I'm sorry, so we're, I know the vote is what I'm, so all, all in favor of this, um, resolution authorizing execution and acceptance of the ingress egress for the technical college, um, please raise your hand. Three. Okay, all opposed. And I'm, had noted that I was abstaining. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, um, we're now going to invite up Mr. Charles Mosley Up to, um, present the Development Authority update, as was noted early on the agenda.
Well, good morning, thank y'all for having me here. I'll try to get through this relatively quickly. Um, just gonna focus on the highlights to start with, with the Development Authority. Um, you know, we, we work with a tremendous number of projects each year for companies who are looking to site locations here in Henry County. Uh, this past year, we worked on, I think that number, it's about thirty-seven, uh, new projects, seventeen of which were related to advanced manufacturing, thirteen of which were related to logistics, four for professional services, and three for healthcare. Of the projects that committed to come to Henry County in 2016, and committed to job creation and investment numbers, we've had over one thousand four hundred and fifty jobs committed to. Um, that, that's a record year for the Development Authority, both in terms of job creation and investment. Uh, the investment's over four hundred and nine million dollars just from 2016 alone. Uh, and then the, the revenue estimates, as best we can calculate them, it should generate about twenty-two million dollars in additional revenue for Henry County over the next ten years. Uh, in terms of the, the breakout of those jobs that were being created by industries who are already here in our community, about six hundred and fifty of those, uh, by companies who are here, who have a presence here, and who are growing, uh, about seventy-five million dollars in additional investment was made from those companies. Uh, in terms of trends that we're seeing in the marketplace, uh, I think I spoke with y'all about this last year when I was here, but e-commerce contends, continues to be something that we're seeing a lot of. In terms of project activity, in 2016, we had three hundred and ninety jobs committed to, uh, from various e-commerce projects, and another hundred and ninety million dollars worth of investment. Um, active projects right now, and we, you know, we may or may not be successful in, in locating these projects in Henry County, but we have active projects currently considering Henry County that would represent over thirty-four hundred new jobs and over two hundred and forty million dollars in investment. Uh, one of the other things that we do at the Development Authority is business retention services, and so our Director of Existing Industry, Leah Brown, is working with these communi- or with these industries on a regular basis. She's out in the community, she's visiting them, finding out what they need, we're sending them monthly e-newsletters, uh, we're sending out blogs with information that may be pertinent to them, uh, helping them with export assistance, helping them get connected with the right people at the Georgia Department of Economic Development for trade assistance, uh, and also assisting them in connections with other various state entities that may be helpful to them. In terms of small business, I think probably the, the most exciting thing that the Development Authority is working on there is to support, uh, the One Henry Initiative's effort to create an incubator here in Henry County. Uh, currently, the Development Authority, uh, has contributed, uh, fifteen thousand dollars to a feasibility study to be completed by the Advanced Technology Development Center out of Georgia Tech. So they're doing a feasibility study for our incubator now in Henry County, uh, and we hope that, uh, that goes successfully, and that we can continue to partner with them, uh, and look for ways to provide additional funding for an incubator moving forward. But this is gonna be something that's gonna be a great business to, great, uh, benefit to small businesses who are here in the community, uh, as well as, you know, just entrepreneurs who have ideas, who, you know, have a startup plan, uh, and, and even people from surrounding communities that are maybe looking for this kind of support, but don't have that kind of infrastructure in their own communities. So, uh, the incubator really is, 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 can be a transformational project for the community, uh, something that we're really excited about. Probably, it, it will definitely be the most tangible thing, um, once we get it up and running, that we will have on the ground for small businesses here in Henry County. Uh, and it, it's also something that will set us apart from, from many of the other counties in Georgia. Uh, there's only a handful in the state that have dedicated incubators like this for small Uh, our marketing, uh, is something that, uh, we've, we've put a lot of effort into, particularly over the last couple of years. Um, we've engaged in a digital marketing campaign, uh, sort of an example of, if you were to go to our website, or if you were to Google the Henry County Development Authority, or choose Henry, or even economic development in Atlanta, um, you'd see the Henry County Development Authority's page come up. If you were to click on that, um, you would probably notice that as you navigate through other websites on the internet, that these digital ads will start following you around. Uh, and so we've got a series of digital ads that are targeted to all of our targeted industries. So, we've got ones that target healthcare, advanced manufacturing, logistics, professional services, uh, we also have ones that, that talk about Georgia being the number one state in the nation to do business, uh, and also talk about some of the available sites and buildings that we have here in the community. Um, our website was redone, uh, and launched at the beginning of 2015. Uh, in 2016, we saw almost eighteen thousand new visitors to the website, uh, over five thousand visitors were returning visitors. Um, we also sent out a series of twenty-five blog posts that were published, um, with information about things going on in the community, about, about why Henry County's a great place to do business. Those twenty-five blog, blog posts received, um, almost forty-four hundred page views. And, um, you can see as well, we sent a series of targeted emails to site selection consultants, to CEOs, to project managers, anybody who may drive projects, or may have a company that's growing, uh, to let them know why they should think about Henry County as a place to bring their business. And we sent over three thousand of those targeted emails in 2016. Uh, our social media presence is something that continues to grow. We have several fans on Facebook, we're active on Facebook, we're active on Twitter, we're active on LinkedIn. Um, so our marketing campaign, uh, I think it, it probably is, is one of the best you'll find nationwide, uh, in terms of the branding that the Development Authority has, in terms of the information that's available on our website, uh, and in terms of the digital ad campaign that we run, I think that's something that, that's unique to us, and not a lot of communities are doing that. Um, that's essentially all I have for you. I, I wanted to, to talk about, um, you know, some of our successes in the past year. Uh, this slide is really just to kinda capture some of the things that will continue to be areas of opportunity, uh, areas of challenge, areas of opportunity, areas of growth for Henry County, you know. And I said this to you last year, this list really hadn't changed all that much, but, um, you know, population growth is gonna continue to be a factor here. Um, we're growing, I think, we're either the first or second fastest-growing county in metro Atlanta right now, um, and that, I think, will probably continue into the future. Um, so, you know, we're looking at ways to improve our transportation infrastructure, uh, we're looking at community improvement districts, we're looking at incubator, uh, we're looking at ways to continue, uh, to build out our workforce development, uh, provide the skills to people in the community so that they can get the jobs that are available and the jobs that, that we're helping to bring to the community. Um, so, you know, part of what we do, uh, at the end of the day, is we're trying to grow the, we're trying to grow the tax revenue for the county. The, the commercial and industrial tax base that we're able to bring in subsidizes the services that we're able to provide to the citizens of Henry County. Having a strong, uh, commercial and industrial tax base, tax base is, is incredibly helpful when you have economic slowdowns and downturns, so that the, the majority of that burden doesn't fall to homeowners, uh, and residential property owners. So, uh, with this last slide, I, I'll open it up to any questions, uh, that the board may have for me. Um, if you have anything, I, I'll invite my, my chairman, Jeff Cobble, up here. If you've got any questions for my chairman, he's here as well, uh, and we'd be happy to take any of those.
Okay, uh, we've got a question, a comment from Commissioner Clemens.
Um, I have a couple of comments and questions, um, because ninety percent of the warehouses are in District Two. And I get calls, I get emails, I see people on the street, and I'm always bombarded with things about the warehouses in Henry County, the warehouses in District Two. And I hear what you're saying, I understand that twenty-two million over ten years, that's like two million a year, but I also understand the tax breaks that we give to these big-box warehouses that come into our community to be here. And I think the tax breaks that we give them, and the amount of money that they get off of their, um, expenses to be here, that the quality of life that's impacted, there's no cost for that. When I say quality of life being impacted, I mean the traffic congestion, the trucks, um, the fact that that district that they sit in, we don't, we have a two-hundred-and-four acre park with no walking trails, no pavilions, we don't even have a center or a recreation closing unit for our kids in District Two. But we've got billions of dollars of money that people are making in these warehouses. I understand the fifteen thousand dollars that you guys gave to One Henry, which is part of the chamber, but I would like to see a partnership with the leader of District Two. Will you help me get some things done in our district, so that when I might out talking to my constituents about these warehouses, that I can talk about the community impact that they're also putting back into District Two. So that's what I would like to see, I would like to have that conversation, I would like to have some tangible, as you said, this is a, the incubator is a tangible thing. I have something more tangible, like, let's look at some of the projects that I don't have SPOLOST dollars to get. Let's be creative, let's allow these warehouses to invest in the community that they affect negatively. My constituents have called it warehouse anxiety. They have said it's a big-box swindle. Why are you guys, the commissioners, allowing more warehouses? Well, it's really out of our hands, because we have a Development Authority. But I would like to see that partnership, uh, come to fruition... But I would like to see that partnership come to fruition, I would like to see you guys work with me as a commissioner in District Two, not the Chamber, not One Henry, but those people that elected me, that I will be able to say, there's a positive impact that's more tangible that we can see from the Development Authority. Write us a check, I got some projects that you can fund and that the warehouses can fund.
Commissioner Clemmons, let me, I, we appreciate those concerns, we look forward to working with you. We want to work with you from the Development Authority. As you may know, I also co-chair One Henry, and I can say, you know, One Henry, not just as an effort of the Chamber, but as an effort of stakeholders throughout the community. From the perspective of the Development Authority, One Henry, my own perspective as both a District One resident and as a District Two business owner, we want to work with you to positively impact that district.
Thank you.
That said, there are a couple of things that I think are very important to note, particularly related to the Development Authority, particularly related to warehouse, warehouses logistics, distribution. The primary, we don't incentivize developers in the construction of
The warehouses.
The warehouses.
Right.
We don't provide any incentives. Typically, and those warehouses and distribution centers and logistics are placed based on zoning, which we have no control over. So if a private developer wants to build a warehouse in District Two, and they buy the land that's appropriately zoned and they pursue building that, we typically don't know that that's occurred, and that construction is already up
Right.
without the Development Authority's involvement. So we're not driving that development. You know, as, like I said, as a resident of District One, I live very close to Lambert Farms, I, my business is off of Highway 155, so I go through Greenwood every day. It's difficult, and I think that's something, as a county, we have to address traffic infrastructure. That's probably one of our biggest challenges in terms of economic development, and that's something that we're trying to proactively do. But, but the idea that we are incentivizing the development of big boxes without, without any, that we can control that, what really controls that is zoning and the private market and private developers. So, that's, but we want to work with you any way we can to improve District Two, we're here to help.
I appreciate that because the big boxes are there, and we're probably the least district that has the quality of life, and our quality of life is being affected. So there's a couple of things that we can look at to make sure that they know these people are not just here, and I'm talking about the businesses. Now, I know you don't do the development or the building, but the businesses do get incentivized.
Yes, they do.
Okay. So those are the ones that make the money, those are the ones that can invest back into the community. So, I've met with four of the CEO managers over there, and one thing that I want to point out, that one of the, one of my constituents sent to me, is that these businesses, and I saw all the jobs that you put up, but the answer to the question that I asked one of the corporate managers was, you know, what are you looking for, how many jobs are you creating? They said, we're looking for people with basic qualifications like high school diplomas or equivalent. Our starting salary starts from $10 to $11.71 per hour. So not only are they coming, they're not really, and I'm not saying that people don't need to make $10 an hour, I, I get that. I'm just saying that at least the people who live here, that travel to Atlanta and have that, and come back with that quality of life impact, we just got to do something to make this a more positive relationship. I'm so tired of the complaints and the issues that I'm getting from that. So we want high-quality paying jobs. So when you guys are looking, contacting the Economic Development Department of the State of Georgia, let's try to get some jobs and some companies that are paying a little bit more than $10, because they're not going to be able to live in Henry County on $10 an hour. You know, they're not going to be able to live anywhere, anyplace much. So we've got to look at high-quality paying jobs as well. What are we doing? Those 900 jobs, and when I went and talked to these owners and the managers at these companies, they're temping the jobs out. So not only are they temping 90% of their jobs out, there are no benefits for these employees.
So, there are a few criteria we look at, and we agree, wages, and an average wage is always part of that, and we always want to drive, and that's a major point in considering any project, is what the average wage is that would be provided, and we always want, so that's something where we currently look at, and a project that comes to us with a high average wage versus the county average, is always going to have more serious consideration for us than one that's at the average, which we may or may not choose to incentivize.
Right. But we're not at the table, we send, I know, each commissioner gets an appointment, we're not at the table. Our appointments are there at the table, and I know they, there are things that they can tell us, cannot tell us, I'm just saying that I'm going to have a close eye, I'm looking, I'm wanting to know what's going on. I want to bridge this gap. I don't want to be closed out, I feel closed out, and it's in my district, I don't want to be closed out. I want to know what's going on, and I want to know how do we incentivize the quality of life.
Can I, can I bring up one area, one way that we've been looking at, and there's been some talk about the Community Improvement District, that does, that is, does impact your district a tremendous amount, and is a very direct way for the commercial property owners alone to contribute back to infrastructure improvements. And we have seen that, the necessity of that Community Improvement District being primarily centered around the congestion and the need for investment on Highway 155 and in those industrial areas. We see it as a way for the industrial end-users to pay back to the community and use those funds to improve the road. So that's been our entire goal related to the Community Improvement District. And while we funded the feasibility study on the Community District, Improvement District in District Two, that spans Districts One and Two and the industrial areas, we also paid to have the county evaluated for additional Community Improvement Districts, including the north side, to look at other areas that have the commercial base to support that. And those Community Improvement Districts could be used for transportation, for beautification, all of those investments.
I've met with Nuka Works, and I've been talking to her, and that CID is going to come many years down the road. It's going to be at least five years before we even start seeing any money, probably longer than that, come in from that CID. And even if it's not, I'm elected for four years, there's some immediate money that those big boxes can put into creating some projects in District Two now. I don't want to wait on a CID. The Development Authority, you guys can write a check, like the Water Authority does, $100,000, but I want to see some improvements before the CID, and I want to see the big boxes investing back into the community immediately, some immediate returns. So that's what I would like to see.
We look forward to talking with you.
Thank you.
I think it's also important to note that a lot of the entry, when you talk and you focus just on entry-level wages for a specific company, that, you know, you're bringing in people at a lower end, there's a lot of room for advancement, and if you look across Henry County in the logistics sector, the average wage countywide, that takes into account not just the entry-level employees, but people who have been there and moved up, and managers, and people that work in some of the higher technology facilities, you're actually looking at an average wage that's closer to $20 an hour. So, it's just an important thing to note.
That's not a lot, not when we give a bonus to the Development Authority of like $10,000 a year, so it is $20 an hour. Henry County deserves better.
Okay. Any other comments from any of the other commissioners? All right, well, thank you for your presentation.
We appreciate your time and attention.
Okay, now, we will move into our public comment section, where citizens are allowed to voice county-related concerns, opinions that are not listed on the agenda during this portion of the meeting. And all persons wishing to speak for comments must sign in with the county clerk prior to the beginning of the meeting. You must complete the public comment speaker form, or you will not be recognized, and you will be able to address the board for five minutes. And so we have three that have signed up for public comments, and we'll begin with Mr. Bill Tony.
Bill Tony McDonough, Georgia. I'd like to, I'd like to say, Ms. Wood, you've truly moved me to the back of the bus, and I don't like being at the back of the bus, ma'am.
What I'd like to say is, this is the agenda for today. You've moved the public comments, you've taken away the 15 minutes, and you moved me to the back of the bus, just like Ms. Parks years and years ago. You can move me to the back of the bus, but it's not going to shut me up. I'm going to tell the citizens of this county what's going on. They're going to know all your, all your deals, all the stuff that's going. You're not going to shut me up. I'm putting the board on notice, we're not going to have any backroom deals, you're not going to be having everything set when it comes out here, we want some transparency in government. Ms. Dee Clemmons, I congratulate you on a fantastic job you're doing. You're trying to bring everything in front of people so they can see what's going on here. Ms. Wood, I have to agree with Mr. Holmes, you're doing a sloppy job. It's not right, what you're trying to do here. You're wanting to have it, we're not going to rename this county Woods County, I promise you. This right here, we're going to, everything that y'all are doing behind the scenes and everything, we're going to make everything public to where people can see what's going on. Now, Mr. Barm, back when me and you were running, and I told you it was going to take all this money to build the park, the water park, the famous water park, and you said not much more than a garden hose and an acre of land, pretty much. You brought, you paraded all kind of county employees, saying the money, it wasn't going to take that money. Guess what? This is one of those "I told you so" moments. I told you there was going to be, there's going to be a lot more money involved. As a business owner, I can see projections, I can see things, and when you throw government in it, you might as well double it. Mr. Holmes, I don't have a problem with your park. What I do have a problem with is those sidewalks lead right to DeKalb County, pretty much. We're not, we're sharing that, we're taking all the expense of it, and we're sharing it with DeKalb County. I don't think that's fair. You parade a bunch of people up here, and, and, you know, they have a right, just like I have a right, but I'll never be at that park because it's so far up in the county, it's next to DeKalb County. I don't go up that way. So, no, I don't, I hate to go to Atlanta, to be honest with you. I'm a country boy.
Excuse me, I will allow Mr. Tony to finish his.
No, that's okay, that's okay. Let me tell you, I like transparency, Ms. Woods, I like it. Mr., let me tell you, Tommy Smith, you can like him, you not like him, you miss him today, you knew exactly where Tommy Smith stood. You are backroom, that is you. I knew it before you got here, and I knew it all along. That's the reason I didn't vote for you, and I didn't support you. Well, my time is just about up. Thank you. I hope y'all really missed Mr. Smith today. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Tony. Okay. Our next citizen is Mr. Carl Swenson.
You know who I am, Carl Swenson, glad to see you, Commissioners, Chairman. I got to start off by saying, Mr. Holmes, I don't ever question your heart, you've got a big heart, you do. Logic, not so much. $4 million, I think, was the original forecast for the park, was it not? And then, the idea to bring DeKalb in on this, not the south side, or even Clayton, but DeKalb, I don't know where that comes from, or whose back you're scratching, but that's another $2 million. This thing will be eight before it's all said and done, at least. And even that's not the worst part, the worst part is that, A, you're right, there's no sidewalks, you've got kids coming up and down Fairview Road, and they're going to be in harm's way, big time. You don't really care about that right now because you want to get this thing done. Well, you got to do things right. And to put the police precinct on the backburners, that makes absolutely no sense. We need precincts in that area. Sure, we've got Stockbridge, but you know how long a cruise it is up there from Stockbridge? I've been broken into a couple of times, and I'm not even that far north, I'm Thurmond and East Atlanta. Oh, and by the way, thanks for getting rid of the porta potty, I do appreciate that. It takes, it takes three or four minutes for him to get to me right there from, from Stockbridge, okay? So, having your constituents be better protected, in my crazy mind, should be job one, should be job one for all of you, to protect those that elected you to office. Somehow, we're getting off on tangents here, spending money that really don't have, but as far as the splosh goes, those monies are apportioned. X number of dollars for the park, X number of dollars for the precinct, X number of dollars for the fire department, you know? Everything is apportioned, and whether you do it now, or a little later, the voters voted on that to do it with the money that came in on that splosh. Splosh Four is gone. Now we're working on Splosh Five. No more money coming in on Splosh Four, right? Only Splosh Five. And already, you're talking about a little bait and switch here, you see, because you had it in under Splosh Four. And now, your favorite esquire over here is telling you that, eh, well, we can, we can move it around, it doesn't matter, as long as it gets done. That's no way to run a business, and that's what you guys are doing. You have the fiduciary responsibility to run the business of Henry County. And by the way, you shouldn't be going to all these extremes to give that authority away to authorities, to boards. It's your job. We didn't elect you to give it to the Water Authority, to give it to the Board of Development, to give it to any of the corporations, which, I don't know when you're actually acting as something, acting as such. And besides, I did ask for minutes to the various corporations I made you aware of last time, and what they gave me was the minutes to these meetings, which means that you guys are acting as these board executives during these commission meetings. And I only have really one other thing to say, I don't get scared much, but Ms. Wood, when you start talking global, the hair on the back of my neck stands up, because ma'am, we are not global, we are local. You only, you were only elected to care about and for the people of this county, not people in Vietnam or anywhere else. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Swenson. Okay, we have our Mr. Larry Maury, who will now come.
My name is Larry Maury, Ethics in Government. A few months ago, I met for our voter board in Henry County, and since that time, I gave each one of you a handwritten documentation of what had transpired in one of our meetings with the voter board, and how they literally broke the law several occasions, I gave you documentation of that. I've had no comment except from Ms. Dee, from any of you, about that situation, it's as though it's just non-existent. Your county attorney wrote the Attorney General for Georgia, admitting that he had erred twice in the law, recommended training. Since that time, in January, they've had their training. One of those members did not attend that training, doesn't appear that she intends to do that, and I have a CD of that, of that meeting, and it would really behoove, you know, the voter is, the voting board is where we all start in Henry County as far as rights and voting privileges. And if we can't run the voting board of Henry County in a legal manner, how in the world can we run anything else in Henry County? I got I got the CD of it, because undoubtedly, y'all are not concerned enough. I will say, Ms. Dee, I appreciate you being considerate enough to call me back. It does appear that you were the only one that's really taken a part of what's right and wrong in this county. You're finally coming on board with, with these warehouses, and I applaud you for that. But let's get back to the voter board. The, the, your county attorney asked that they be trained, so the state attorney general sent people down here and trained all of them except one. Now, in May, there's gonna be two people appointed, reappointed, or appointed to that committee. I'm gonna ask that you, if you need a copy of that CD, you need to, you need to pay attention to it. Because one of those ladies, and I'm gonna name her, Ms. Thomas, she is senile. Well, you can say what you want to do. And she doesn't need to be on that board, because she doesn't understand what's even going on. It's pitiful. Ms. Moon, she's the one that didn't show up for, to be certified, recertified, or whatever you want to call it. She didn't even show up. And so she's up for appointment in this May. Mr. Brown, who was appointed by Mr. Preston, who I had before the voter board, didn't even exclude himself, and he's the one that was appointed by Mr. Preston. So you see, it was just wholesale, no moral compass at all, much less legal compass. So it was just, but that's, I've got a copy of it. If, if y'all don't care anymore about the voting privileges and the voting rights and what's legal, then do not even, not even pursue what I've given you after it was legally proven, then we got some serious problems. I think I got a minute and 26 seconds, and I'd like to, Ms. Dee, don't be sugar-coated into believing that the Chamber, One Henry, and all of these people ain't lockstep on warehouses. From the governor to the chamber, to the, to the industrial development, to the One Henry, that CID ain't nothing but another taxing department, so we can tax Henry County people to pay for those warehouses. Home Depot, and I gave all of y'all a copy of this a week or so ago, in Valdosta, Georgia, they went and paved the whole road for, for Home Depot. Home Depot's put, just put a brand-new, couple of million square feet on 155. Did you know that one, that Home Depot puts in nice parks all over the United States? Home Depot is using tip help at that warehouse right now. They ought to be out here building a park for Henry County, for these children. They got the money to put on the Super Bowl. They got enough money to put on a park. They're gonna do it somewhere, why don't they do it in Henry County? Ms. Woods, remember this. What goes around, my daddy always said, will come around. And as, as you say, he, he said, you put him to the rear of the bus, we'll come back to the front of the bus. You spent an hour today, and, and never opened your mouth with all this about Bruce.
Mr. Maury, you're out of time, and thank you for your comments.
Just come back.
I appreciate that. Okay. Well, we thank you. Those were our public comments for today. We'll now move into item 21 regarding the approval of our minutes for the January 17th Board of Commissioners meeting. The floor is now open for a motion for approval of the minutes.
So what?
I'm sorry. I got a motion?
Second.
You got a second. Any comments or questions regarding the minutes? All in favor? Any opposed? Okay. Well, now move into item 22 regarding chair and commissioner comments. Would like to just check in with each of you to see if you've got any additional comments.
I do have a comment. Trying to, I'm sorry, I didn't realize people couldn't hear me. I'll, I'll try to speak up. Right now, it seems that the litter bug has come back to Henry County. Again, I've said this before, the number one complaint that I get is about litter. And this last week, it was Thursday a week ago, I had an inmate crew come out to a particular road and do a litter pickup. On my way here this morning, there was litter on that road. It looked like a bomb went off. So I'm, I'm here to ask the public if you could meet me halfway. Instead of throwing garbage out, keep, keep it in your car, maybe put a bag in there or something. I, I don't see it logistically possible for us to pick up garbage on every road once a week. So i, if, if you guys could just meet me in the middle and, and try to work with me some on the litter. We are increasing services with the litter pickup. We are, we are working toward that goal. And I know Commissioner Holmes gets a lot of complaints, and I'm sure Commissioner Clemmons has had quite a few as well. But again, we are gonna increase service, but I, but I do need some help from the citizens, if, if you would. Thank you.
Commissioner Clemmons?
Yes, I have started a program where we're allowing, where I'm allowing young ladies in our community to shadow me for a day as a job, as a female commissioner in this county. And so that these young people that are growing up in this community know what it looks like, know what it's about. She happens to live in the area where the warehouses are, and so I was fighting for you today, stand-up Samara, Samara Horton. Her drawing of her community does not include warehouses. It includes great parks, and festivals, and businesses, and jobs. And she asked me, well, Ms. Dee, how much money do you make for doing that? It's not about the money. It's about making sure that you have a safe neighborhood. And thank you for being here with me today.
Very good. Commissioner?
Yes, I've got a few comments, but I would like to ask Ms. Matthews a question, go along with what Blake had talked about. I'm getting a lot of calls about litter as well, and I know that Arthur had retired, but do we have a replacement in that program actively? I mean, are we seeing about it every day, or?
Yes, sir. We actually have appointed an interim code enforcement director within the, within the code enforcement department. But we are also at the staff level, looking at some other mechanisms for controlling our litter. What I would like to do is meet with staff internally, and they are working on it as we speak in terms of the litter, because we recognize it is an issue. This morning, I came in down Willa Lane, and it was totally blown out, with just trash everywhere. You're right, we don't have all the resources that we need to pick up trash on a daily basis, but we are trying to make sure that we're hitting those critical corridors and those highly-traveled corridors. Staff is preparing me a resolution for the board that I hope to bring to you all at the next meeting in terms of what we're gonna do about the litter control, and hopefully that can address some of the issues. But I agree with Commissioner Prince. We're definitely gonna need the support of the citizens and the residents of the county to not throw your litter out, because we are literally picking up trash on Monday, and by Monday evening, the corridors are back full of trash. But I will be reporting back to the board on that.
Okay. Thank you so much.
I'd like to add just a quick comment regarding the litter. The Rotary Club has agreed to help, you know, again, with some level of cleanup regarding the adopt-a-highway program. Just need to sit down and get that organized as well. But the Rotary Club has also agreed to, to help you some during, over the course.
The other comments?
East Lake Road and Twain, the roundabout is complete now, and we're really excited. If you hadn't had a chance to go through there, go through it. Your, your tax dollars at work there, and it's, it's working very well. I hadn't had anything but positive comments out of it. And to let you know about another project, we're closing down Lake Dall tomorrow. Lake Dall and Rogers and Rossa, so they can get in there and complete that project as well. It'll take them about 30 days to get that project done, but that's another SPOLOST project, great SPOLOST project, and glad to see it. And the only other thing, I'll have a town hall meeting on February 23rd at 6:30 at Wesley Way Methodist Church, and the focus is gonna be public safety and crime prevention. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay. Let me come back to Commissioner Clemmons. She's got one announcement as well.
District Two does have a town hall meeting this Thursday at Nash Farms Park, and I'm expecting a huge crowd to come out, and we're excited about the initiatives that we have for District Two. So I invite anyone else from the other districts, if you're interested in coming out, please come out and share with us that night. It'll be our first town hall meeting for the district.
Ms. Thorst, that.
It starts at, we have networking from 6:00 to 6:30, and then we'll go from 6:30 to 8:00.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, Commissioner?
Thursday this week, February 9th, 6:30.
Thank you. Commissioner Wilson?
Yes, I got one announcement. We have a groundbreaking ceremony Thursday, February the 9th. It's for the Frog Road, Lester Mill Road project for widening and repaving. Be at 2 o'clock.
All right, Commissioner Holmes?
I don't have anything, Madam Chair.
Okay. Well, I do just want to add that we're working very hard, sitting with, in all of the budget meetings, to continue to assess where we are, hear the priorities that are being discussed with different departments. So we will continue to focus in on that. The second thing is, still very much engaged to, at the Atlanta Region Commissioner, Atlanta Regional Commission, to continue to identify opportunities for Henry County, especially regarding transportation, funding opportunities that may be there, or even to accelerate current projects that the Georgia Department of Transportation and the ARC have approved. So we're also involved in a community resources, which involves a lot of the community engagement, so that we will continue, as we began preparation for the comprehensive land use plan updates, how do we continue to engage our citizens to help shape where we want to go? My final comments are, I want to just say thank you to all of those who came out today. We encourage more participation. We encourage you to continue to share your thoughts as well. I do know that we have revised our public comment section, but I think today is a really good example where we wanted to make sure that we had good opportunities to allow others to come and speak, and to also share their thoughts. I want to commend this board. I'm glad that we are a board that understands that we have individual thoughts, and that we have that opportunity to, to voice those thoughts. And yes, it is great to find common goals, but there will be times where we disagree. So I just want, again, want to just say thank you all, and we will continue to move forward into our agenda. The next thing is, is item 23 regarding our next upcoming meetings and events. You've heard about the town hall meetings that have been announced, but on February the 21st at 6:30 PM, that regular meeting was previously and has been canceled. So therefore, the next regular meeting will be scheduled March 7th at 9 o'clock, then March 21st at 6:30 PM. So at this time now, we, I will request a motion to adjourn it to executive sess, executive session to discuss personnel matters.
Chairman, we will also be discussing real estate acquisitions and pending litigation.
Okay. Thank you. So we have, did I get a motion to, to, okay, we got a motion? And I got a second. All in favor? All opposed? All right. We will now move into executive session.